We'll call the meeting to order for Wycomica County Legislative Session 2024-28 for December 17, 2024. For those that like to stand and join us in the Lord's Prayer and Pledge of Allegiance, please do.
Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. And give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not in temptation, but deliver us from evil. Thy name is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the five United States of America and to republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, of liberty and justice for all.
Entertaining motion from council to approve the consent agenda. A move? Second?
Second.
Any corrections, changes? Seeing none, all is in favor of consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion is carried. Consent agenda passes. Entertaining motion from council to adjourn as the Wycomica County Council and convene as Wycomica County Urban Services Commission.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
We're now sitting as the Wycomica County Urban Services Commission. Entertaining motion from council to approve the open work session minutes from November 19, 2024. Second?
Second.
Any corrections? Seeing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion is carried. Approval of work session minutes from November 19, 2024 passes. Entertaining motion to adjourn from Wycomica County Urban Services Commission and reconvene as Wycomica County Council on Legislative Session.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Post. We can now reconvene as the Wycomica County Legislative Session. Mr. Benson, good morning. How are you?
Good morning, Mr. President. We're here first thing this morning, Your Honor, is a public hearing, Your Honor.
Yeah.
That's a lawyer coming out.
Some of it's.
This is a public hearing on Legislative Bill 2024-12, which is an act to amend Chapter 99 of the Wycomica County Code titled Vehicles County to Establish Procedures for the Use and Operation of County-Owned or Leased Vehicles. And this bill was proposed by Mr. Holloway. It was here introduced last meeting or two meetings ago. It's here for a public hearing this morning. The purpose of this bill, the county currently does not have regulations or requirements that relates to county vehicles. This is modeled after another county. It essentially requires decals on county vehicles so that county vehicles are properly identified. It requires the executive to provide the county with a list of county vehicles and what departments they are assigned to once a year at the time the budget is provided so the county council knows what it's paying for. It sets forth limitations on the use of the vehicles such that they have to be used for county business and not for personal business. It establishes a policy that county vehicles employees are not allowed to operate vehicles when they've had alcohol in their system or have used drugs. It establishes a procedure that if there's a county vehicle involved in an accident, the accident has to be reported and investigated by the Sheriff's Department. It would require testing of the county employee, drug testing if there's an accident. It exempts the Sheriff's Department from this. The Sheriff's Department is a state agency. It has county vehicles, but the Sheriff's Department has its own policy in place. And I would note that the state's attorney's office is asked to be exempted from this as well. And again, the state's attorney's office is a state agency, and she will have her own policy as well if the council elects to exempt her from it. That's what this is, Your Honor, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Benson. This time we open the floor for a public hearing on Legislative Bill Number 2024-12. If you have any comments you'd like to make in reference to this specific legislation, come to the podium, state your name, your county of residence, and your concerns.
Good morning. My name is Joe White. I'm resident Wycomica County. I've sat in on several of your work sessions starting a year ago. You've brought in other stakeholders such as the county executive, and I want to ask you to pass this. I do think, you know, taking the time to do the research with the Sheriff's Office and the state's attorney's office is good. I will tell you, this is the type of transparency in government you'd like to see. You've had three or four different work sessions, and now a public hearing. I really commend all of you for taking the time to do this correctly, and I want to say I support you passing this. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. White.
Mike Goldberg, Wycomica County. I don't have a lot to say about this other than I absolutely support this bill. These types of policies are very consistent with policies used not only in other governmental agencies but also in the private sector, from my experience. The accountability and transparency is absolutely essential for the public safety and for the proper use of taxpayer funds. So I do hope that y'all will pass this overwhelmingly. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Goldberg.
Jim Atkins, Wycomica County. Just a couple things. On this bill, I've spoken to several council members, and hopefully this is going to be addressed as the council progresses on with this this morning. Number one, that all accidents need to be reported to the Wycomica County Sheriff's Office, not at the department head or supervisor's discretion. They all need to go to the Sheriff's Department. Concerned about language concerning blood tests, if involved in the accident, that is the requirement, should be a requirement. And then the final thing is, what is the penalty of an employee who refuses a blood test? We know what the legal penalty is as far as your license if you refuse to take a blood test, but what is the employment penalty if you refuse to take a drug test? You're a county employee, and you are involved in an accident, and you refuse to take a blood test, there should be consequences with your employment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Atkins. Any other public comments? Seeing none, that concludes the public comments on Legislative Bill 2024-12. Entertaining motion from council to approve Legislative Bill 2024-12.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, I went and talked to some of our HR about this bill, and I agree with the whole thing. I agree with all the language. I would just like to ask Donna and Cory if they would like to come up and state their concerns about it, because I think it's important that we should know what they already do, and we should have open dialogue about this. So I just want to hear if they have anything they want to express before we pass this.
Donna O'Hara, Director of HR.
Lori Houston, HR Manager.
I agree with 99.9% of what was written, but we do just answer the question from the gentleman that was just up there. The consequences of refusing a drug test at any point when there's an accident within any department, whether it's on the job, behind the vehicle, or whatever, are immediate termination. That's because you're automatically basically admitting guilt. So that would be the policy. Where this legislation was kind of on the table, I drafted at the end of Chapter 8, which you haven't seen yet, a policy that pretty much mirrors what you all had written with a few things that I didn't have the opportunity to present it yet. So there were a few things that we already do or that I wanted to highlight or that I felt needed a little detail for administrative purposes. It's probably not the appropriate time. It's probably too late to really go through them, but I think one of the biggest concerns was HR trying to be responsible for every 30 days getting a driving record for an entire fleet of vehicles and the people who drive them, because it changes depending on whether it's a pool vehicle or a department vehicle. Do I think that there are things we need to work on? Do I think that there are take-home vehicles that maybe don't need to be? Absolutely. Do I think that there have been problems that need to be solved by getting a closer, tighter rein on things? Absolutely. I just, to put it into law, gives us no flexibility in kind of working it out. I think that absolutely we need to get a list from every department of who's assigned what vehicles, and if they're the only person on those vehicles, and then a list of each pool vehicle and every single person who may at any point in time be assigned to that vehicle. And yes, every six months maybe pull a record, but the onus in most places is for the employee. If they have been involved in some type of traffic violation that involves the law or where a points on their license, it's their duty to report to us within two business days, three, you can establish whatever business days. I'd say two at least, in case they were in an accident or in the hospital, whatever, to self-report. That's how the federal government, that's how, my husband is a DOD contractor, they have two days to report. Otherwise, they can be subject to termination. So for us to try to monitor in our small department on a constant basis everybody's driving record is a little bit of a concern for me. As far as consuming alcohol, I believe you have it in there, is eight hours, within eight hours of driving a county vehicle. I don't know how in God's name we could possibly monitor something like that and know. We can't be detectives and follow people around 24/7 to know, you know, what they're doing. So those are my concerns in putting something like this and then potentially being held responsible for finding out later on that someone did something and then coming back on us. I just, there are concerns there. I absolutely feel like we need to rein things in and get things under control, and that council should have that information of who's driving what, where. And I do believe in the seals being on the vehicles, on all vehicles, so that they are clearly identified. I don't necessarily think that if I have to call, I'll use Lori Carter, even though she's not planning these anymore, if I had to borrow Lori's SUV to go to a conference because the pool car wasn't available and the seal fell off the day before, that I would get punished for not having the seal in the car when I've got to be in Baltimore at, you know, 6:00 in the morning the next day or leave for Baltimore. So those are just some of the things that I'm bringing forward. I know it's too late in the process, but I wish we would have been able to have some conversations earlier, but it didn't work out that way. Cory, do you want to?
So underneath 99-3, number A, is talking about a certified driving record, not more than 30 days old, to Human Resources. Okay, Maryland charges $12. Delaware charges for a certified driving record $35. Virginia charges $13. So you're going to put hardship on the employees to have to go to DMV every 30 days, as this states, to get a driving record for Maryland, Delaware, and Virginia. I have people that operate vehicles every single day. By what this states, it says no, not more than 30 days old. So that means every month. I have employees that are still making minimum wage and getting retirement, family health insurance taken out. They're barely making some of the ends meet as it is. And then we have to put a hardship on the employee to get a certified driving record every 30 days.
What section did you say it was?
It's 99-3, number A.
I think the intent of that is that before starting the process of someone being allowed to utilize a vehicle, but I don't want to speak for the authors of it, but...
But also, like if tomorrow, I have correctional officers or even just staff, planning and zoning staff, that normally don't use a car, but they're saying, hey, tomorrow, I need you to go out to a certain job site, or I need you to go to a certain training or attend a certain meeting, they can't get to DMV to get a certified driving record within 24 hours. Okay? So in other words, basically, I have to make 600 employees plus part-time staff, because part-time staff also uses our vehicles. So we're going to mandate that all employees get certified driving records.
I don't think it says here that you have to have one that's more than 30 days old.
Yeah.
It says prior to utilizing a vehicle, which means when they get employed, and they're going to be driving a vehicle.
That is not more than 30 days old.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So they have to have a driving record before they start utilizing a vehicle that the county owns. In other words, when they get hired and they're going to drive a vehicle, they have to have, it doesn't say here that they have to have one every 30 days. That's what you're...
No, but not more than 30, the driving record's not supposed to be no more than 30 days old. I've been here 19 years.
With all due respect, that's not what it says. The section says that they have to supply a driving record that is no more than 30 days old. That is the first time. They are only obligated under the second sentence, an updated driving record must be provided within 10 days in any change to the driving record. If you supply a driving record and you never get a ticket or a point, and there's no change in your driving record, you never have to supply a second driving record to the county. The only time you're going to have to, the county employee's going to have to provide a second or third or fourth is if they have a change in their driving record. If they get a DWI, they're going to be required to notify the county and provide an updated driving record. And the same thing would be true, but the second sentence modifies the first sentence, and it clearly says an updated is only required if there's a change in the driving record.
Could it be clarified that prior to initial utilization, because of the way the last two years have been, and one word ends up in a year...
How about upon employment?
I guess the issue might be here is if an employee just wants, needs to take your car, let's say, for an emergency, I don't even know if you have a car.
I don't, and I don't want one ever.
So if an employee wants to take a company vehicle, because they have to maybe go get something, there's an emergency, they have to go out to the landfill, that person hasn't supplied a record, of course.
Right.
So what happens in those type of circumstances when you have a county employee who needs to use a county vehicle to go to the landfill and has no driving record?
Well, I guess overall, we just need to know that the person has a clean driving record, right? We don't need to gum up government any more than it already is. So I think the intent of this is just to make sure that someone has a clean driving record, and if there's any changes in it, that they then report that.
Understood.
So, or a better way that we could say that, you know, and I don't know, is there a way that we can put it back on the employee just to not have to have this dummy's colossus?
And I think that's probably, and I don't want to speak for her, the point of the county executive asking if we could possibly make it to be in the personnel manual versus law, basically, so that we all have the ability on a fluid, ongoing basis, depending on, because different circumstances come up all the time that you would not dream of, that we may, it's much easier to change this with a resolution, you know, and a policy than it is to go through legislation. I 1,000% agree that we need to rein things in. I am in no way, shape, or form arguing that fact at all, but you wouldn't believe some of the circumstances that pop up, you know, if somebody's having, you know, needs to be taken to the hospital and, you know, and the only other person available is someone who hasn't got a driving record. You know, we've had a ton of different circumstances. I had someone in my own department who went into a diabetic coma, and I hadn't had my driving stuff done yet, so...
So anyway, I think you can, you know, we've been working on this a year, so, you know, this has been out there for eight or nine months.
Sure.
There was plenty of chances to email us with issues that you had. I don't think anybody's going to get criticized, fired, or for taking somebody to the hospital if there's an emergency and they've not provided a driving record. Okay? I don't think that's going to happen. The language, you know, is pretty clear. I think you can base your policy after this legislation.
Right, which I did. My draft did, yeah.
So, anyway.
Also, there's an issue. So if it states about the sheriff office investigating all incidents, accidents, vandalism to county property, county vehicle, what if it's not in their district? What if it's in the city of Salisbury? What if it's in New Jersey? What if it's in Pennsylvania? What if it's in Dorchester County, Worcester County?
That would be investigated naturally by the, if it's in the city of Salisbury, it could be the sheriff's office, because they do operate in the city of Salisbury, but if it happens in Delaware or Jersey, naturally, that would be investigated by that law enforcement agency, but they would turn it over to our sheriff's office for them to review it. That's what would happen there. So if there was an accident in New Jersey, it was investigated by, say, the New Jersey State Police. I'm sure they would send, you know, the paperwork to you guys, and you would provide it to the sheriff's office, or they would send it to the sheriff's office.
Also, about 99-4, number J, the WEX card, says do not leave into a custodial service station attendance unless they're a county employee, if they're not a county employee. In the state of New Jersey, which we do have trainings there, you're not allowed to pump your own gas. You're not allowed to get out of your vehicle. There are some states like that, so how are we going to pump gas?
Which one is this now? 99-4 what?
Well, the one in the briefing book says 99-4-J.
J.
J. About the WEX card.
What would be the confusion on the WEX card?
Because it says that we're not allowed to give the custodial, the WEX card is not to be left in the custodial service station attendance or other persons not employed by the county. All WEX card policies adhere by the time, but it says it's supposed to be in possession of the county employee.
Hand that WEX, you can hand that WEX card to the employee. It just says you don't, we don't want you to leave it.
To the attendant.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think you'd be okay with that.
And regards to being on the, being talked about for a year, it did drop off for a little while there, and in the meantime, the county executive had asked me to draft a policy, so I had it in the book to go whenever we got back on the agenda. So, and by all means, please email me, please call me if you have questions. It's been a little bit of a tenuous time, so, you know, I...
We've supplied this to the, Andrew, you worked with Andrew on everything.
And we worked with Andrew, too. He met with us, and we gave him, he gave him the information as well. We sat down, and they went back and forth based on our, but I did put it in a policy in case you had made, wanted to make the decision to let it be in a policy and procedure manners. It's not that it was ignored, it was, I drafted the policy that would either marry to it or take the place of it going into legislation and supply that for whoever was...
Thank you for updating your policy. I think it's time that we've done that, so, anyway.
I want to go back to this question you had on H, when it says each county vehicle's, for the council's reference in the briefbook, it's on page 41 of the PDF in the briefbook, but it's 99-4H. It says each county vehicle's travelogue shall be submitted at least once each month to the head of the department that the vehicle is assigned to, and the department head shall review the vehicle log monthly. Why is that, why is that a problem? Do I have the right section, or is there a...
No. No, we didn't have a problem with that. It was J.
J was WEX.
J with a WEX card, page 42.
No, we just talked about the WEX card.
Yeah. No, we don't have a problem with H.
Anything about H?
I thought you said that you couldn't do something every 30 days.
No, it's the driving record, pulling driving record, which we are...
Which section is that?
That's right at the beginning.
Which, I mean, is it worth, that's a bigger issue. Is it worth striking that or at least clarifying that it just needs to be a clean record in order to have utilization of, operation of any car?
Cleaned up, so, I mean, initial...
Prior to initial use or prior to...
I wouldn't say use, I mean, if we get it in employment, I mean, like with their job application or whatever, when we're doing their new hire stuff, and if there's any changes in the meantime, but to put hardship on a county employee because they have to spend $35 if it's a resident of Delaware to get a certified copy.
Basically just...
And I understand Mr. Benson saying that that negates that, but I think it would be helpful, just because I've learned a lot over the last two years about words, how important is that to have, prior to initial use, maybe would be helpful.
I like Jeff's suggestion, upon employment.
Okay.
But prior to start of employment instead of prior to utilizing a vehicle.
Okay.
Or upon authorization of, you know, a driver must have clean driving record or something.
Mr. President, just for clarification, if you add that language, are you then saying that the current employees that are driving the vehicles would not need a driving record?
I think that if this goes into legislation, then we probably would go ahead and pull a clean one for everyone. That way we have a baseline, and then we can move forward from, that would make sense to me.
I think that's what this language is saying already.
That's what it says.
I can't read it differently, but it's, I mean, because, I mean, from day to day, you have no clue if you're going to be driving a county vehicle or not. So if you get it when you first start, when I get their, like, new hire packet...
The problem that Ms. Hurley's pointing out is that the vast majority of people are already employees of the county, and if you put prior to employment, all those people are grandfathered in and don't have to provide a copy.
Well, everybody that utilizes a vehicle now is on a random pool, and we pull their driving records. We make, we have their driving records. Anybody that utilizes a vehicle now.
Can we put a date prior to employment and this specific date?
I think we need, maybe you can explain what you just said, because I thought you said you now pull their driving records anyway.
We pulled our CDLs.
We pull a CDL.
Yeah, that's, but that's different, yeah. We don't pull, we don't pull everyone's, no. It's just our CDLs that we pull.
So you had, do you have the ability to pull?
We have Maryland, but not Delaware and Virginia. But by this, it states it needs to be a certified, certified copy driving record.
What if we were to say, prior to utilizing a vehicle, every employee must provide proof of their current valid driver's license, and with the exception of an emergency, a certified copy of the driving record? In that way, if it is an emergency, they have to show their license, but the driving record, we're just going to have to depend on them, to be honest, if they don't have a bad, would that work?
Like for emergencies, like if someone has a diabetic coma, they can, they can rush them?
Yeah, except in a case of emergency. We could amend it, that they do have to provide proof of a current valid driver's, and in case of, and except for in case of an emergency, a certified copy of the driver's license.
Howard, you want to amend it?
Does that help out?
I can make that motion if that's helpful.
So I'd make sure that there's a comma after the word "and," so they know that, or a semicolon after the word "and," so they know that the emergency references, the exception references, the driving record only and not the valid driver's license.
Is there anything else?
In the red line version, you guys talked about the cannabis and driving underneath the influence and stuff. Well, when cannabis became legal, Karpinski, when Kevin Karpinski, underneath the guidelines of a medical cannabis card, they have rules, just because it's just like a driver's license underneath medical cannabis, they have to register it with HR. They actually sign a letter that Karpinski drafted up with our language, that they're not allowed to utilize a vehicle. If they're under the influence, if they have to use, have to use medical cannabis, it cannot be on county property, cannot be on county vehicle, they cannot use a county vehicle, they register that with us. It's kept separately in a separate file because it's a HIPAA thing, but we already implement a lot of this stuff that you guys already have in here. Drug testing of all accidents, we already do, we've been doing for years, but we've already put into play a lot of this, and it's what we follow in the personnel manual.
If this passes the way we have it amended right now, after we just talked about it...
We've got more amendments, I think.
We do have more amendments, but if it does pass, is it, I just don't want to gum anything up for you, for the department.
I think that we clarified a couple of things today that were of concern, which the 30-day constant, keeping up with the record, was a concern because of the way it was worded. And... was worded. And I think that was one of the main ones. But the other part is I don't know how, who is going to regulate whether someone has consumed alcohol within eight hours of driving a vehicle.
You can't regulate that. But what happens is if there is an incident, you know, and say, I mean, I'm sure there's people that quit drinking at 10 o'clock at night, but 8 o'clock the next morning, it's still in their system because of the amount they've drank.
Right.
So we can't.
Okay.
Can't run around with a breathalyzer.
Okay.
You're not expected to do that.
Okay, thank you.
That's not... I mean, just as Mr. Holloway said, that's not what... This does not place a burden on the personnel department to do that. It establishes a policy that employees will be informed of that they are not to drive a county vehicle if they've had alcohol within eight hours. And the language that is in here or will likely be in here if it gets amended has to do with cannabis. And that says it would have a zero tolerance. But the zero tolerance, as I understand it, is a county policy. It's a current county policy.
Correct.
And all we're doing is putting into the law what the current county policy is.
Correct.
So...
That was... That's our main concerns.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We want some language on this 99.3A?
We're still on public comment.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Discussion, I think, yeah.
No, we're... I don't think we've closed the public comment.
We can clear public comments or not?
Yeah, no, we...
Hold on.
We forgot the first and second.
We did?
Yeah, we've already done it.
Okay, all right, so we're... Thank you very much.
So we're still on council comment.
It was mentioned in public comments about 99-4G, reference to all accidents, vandalism, and stating that there was no language in reference to blood tests. This is, again, this is very much last notice for this, but I would have to defer to you, Mr. Benson, as far as any structure referencing blood tests. Is that common that you do go that far as far as blood tests are concerned? I'm familiar with alcohol tests and things like that.
I mean, under Maryland law, it's been a few years since I've done any significant criminal work or traffic work, but under Maryland law, the only time a blood test is mandated, I think, is if there's a person injured in the accident. So normally, it's just a breath test.
Maryland law then distinguishes that if there's an injury, that there should be a blood test?
I think the police have the option of requiring one.
Okay, so maybe that will suffice.
If, for the cannabis... Well, we haven't done the cannabis thing, but if, since cannabis is legal in the state, if they're tested after there's an accident or something and there's cannabis in their system, doesn't that stay in their system for like a month?
The reason... The reason I suggested drafting this or placing language in with a no tolerance policy is that in discussing cannabis with the sheriff, my understanding basically is that there is no testing for cannabis. And if one has a test, a blood test for cannabis, it stays in your system for up to 30 days. And that, basically, there is no way to do a test. Other than that, my understanding is that there are individuals who are employed by the state who have the ability to do enhanced testing, but there's a limited number of them throughout the state. There are none in Wycomico County. I think he indicated he thought the closest one was probably in tablet county. So that if someone is pulled over and there's suspicion that they have cannabis, that they're driving while they're having used cannabis, there's... The officer who pulls them over can't... There is no field sobriety test for cannabis. And if they had a blood test and they used the cannabis within 30 days, it's going to show up that it... And this may not be accurate. My understanding is that if you have a blood test, the blood test you have is going to have the same numbers if it's the 29th day as if it's the second day. So there is no effective test.
There is tests out there that can show a decline or an increase in the amount of...
That was the way it was explained to me by the sheriff. So in any event, the county has a no tolerance policy now. And the no tolerance policy that is suggested to be added to this is based on the county's existing policy.
I guess the obvious challenge of that is, or is it testing THC or CBD? Because there are kids right now that go to Wycomico County Public Schools that are every day taking what would be recreational cannabis, even though there's basically zero THC in it, it's just CBD. You can't get high from it, but it stops epilepsy. It drops it down from, you know, hundreds of reactions a month to one every two months, maybe. So things like that, that's the purpose of the medical cannabis. So are we saying that anyone who has an issue, like using that for epilepsy or other kind... I mean, you name the various reasons why they, folks, they take that, that they would then be, you know, eligible? I mean, they're working, they're every day doing, going to their jobs. We probably have county employees that are using it. For us not to distinguish the difference between THC and CBD, I think is... It puts us in a really, in a bad spot if folks are actually using that for medical reasons.
If you're asking me a medical question, I can... Yes, I can't answer it, so...
I'm asking the collective, I guess. I don't... I think that, I'm just to be clear, there's a very big difference between THC where someone's getting high with and CBD. There's lots of different types of CBDs. And all of those CBDs will not get you high. They sell them at the farmer's market, you know, but that technically, that is medical cannabis. CBD.
Medical cannabis and recreation... I mean, put yourself in the shoes of somebody standing along the road filling in potholes and there's a guy driving a dump truck who's been either using medical or recreation cannabis and he's backing that dump truck up. Do you really want to work with somebody that's under the influence?
They're not under the influence. If someone's on CBD, you're not under the influence. But this just says specifically cannabis.
Right.
So if you want to spell out THC, I think that makes sense. But we don't, to my understanding, we don't really test for the differences. The industry hasn't changed jumping, if that's true. I... It's hard... They can't tell the difference between... I don't know if they're testing for THC or CBD, but THC is the problem.
Well, here's what I'm thinking. We've been talking about this for an hour. It's a public hearing. I think we may need to have a work session with human resources more than what we just had.
This is a discussion on the legislative bill. We're in discussion on the legislative bill, Shane, as to whether we're going to vote for or against it as of right now or table it.
I think the design of all this is to clean up and, correct me if I'm wrong, Joe, but I think the design of all this is to clean up some and clarify some things. And there's always going to be some what ifs in any scenario.
What if we were to, at the end of this sentence where it says, "Use of medical or recreational cannabis in violation of state law"? I covered it.
So just to be clear, the legislation that is in front of you does not have anything in it about cannabis. The amendment that you are thinking about making restricted the cannabis.
Yeah, we've jumped ahead. You're right.
Right. So, I mean, if you adopted the bill as stated, there is nothing in it about cannabis. It's only if you decide you want to amend the bill that the cannabis issue comes up.
You're right. You're right. Any other questions on this?
In order to just do this one time, I wouldn't be opposed to making a motion to just table this, to have, like what Shane was saying, just a work session with our HR, just so we could just do this one time instead of having to come back and clean it up again if we have to.
Motion to table. All those in favor say aye. Opposed?
There's a motion to table. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed, yeah.
Opposed, yeah.
Okay, the table... Motion to table fails. Let's continue on. Any other discussion? Any other recommendation for amendments?
I have something. Just for the record, I read the bill and I like the bill. But after HR coming forward and the discussions we've had here, it just seemed like to me we needed to tighten this up a little more. That's...
Well, there's been a motion to table and denied, so we are going to move forward. Shane, if you have any recommendations on additional amendments based on the testimony, that'd be fine.
I'd just say, I think we're just regarding to the last motion of 99-4.
Excuse me. Sorry.
Just with regard to the last proposed motion that's on our sheet here. With regard to the medical recreational cannabis, I think it's... I'd be fine with that if we wanted to add that to this. Just, I think we should spell out THC as the issue.
What about in violation of state law?
I honestly don't know what state law is, but I'm assuming that it's... Would probably comply with this. I mean, obviously, you don't want anyone driving any heavy equipment or anything like that. But let's say someone is, you know, is taking a CBD for reasons and they're driving just like they would any other day to pick up their kids or go to the grocery shopping and they are in an accident and, you know...
Be doing that county card.
That's what I'm saying. In this case, they'd be in violation, but realistically, you know, you're not... They're already using CBDs for medical reasons to do everyday life, just like you would any other prescription drugs or anything else. The problem is THC.
Well, again, I think if we're trying to stay within state law, I'm hoping that the state of Maryland is going to define, make the distinction between THC and CBDs. What other...
CDL drivers fall under federal law and it's still federally illegal.
Good point.
Okay, I know we do have some amendments. Joe, you had some amendments you wanted to amend to the bill?
Yeah, I've been supplied with these amendments. Thank everybody for their input, I guess. So there's one, two, three, four, five amendments. And I know the last one's not going to suit everybody, but anyway, maybe some of them will. I make a motion to amend section 99-1 titled "Accuability and Definitions to Include the State's Attorney's Office as Having Its Own Vehicle Policy." So letter A shall read, "Accuability. This chapter shall apply to those operators of vehicles and titles or leased in the name of the county, notwithstanding to any contrary set forth herein. This chapter shall not apply to the Wycomico County Sheriff's Office and the Wycomico County Office of the State's Attorney, which have their own written policy directives that address the matters set forth within." I'll make that motion.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion's carried and the amendment has been passed.
Second motion is, "I make a motion to amend section 99-4 titled 'Rules for Operation' to add a new letter G to read as follows. All accidents or vandalism involving a county vehicle is required to be reported by the employee operating and/or assigned to the vehicle to the employee's department head immediately, regardless of whether or not the vehicle was involved or there is any apparent injuries or damages. In addition, the department head and the employee shall immediately report the accident to the Wycomico County Sheriff's Office, which shall investigate accidents or vandalism involving a county vehicle. The employee shall fully cooperate with the sheriff's investigation and to relabel that letters within that section."
Motion's... Make that motion?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes and the amendment passes.
The next motion. "I make a motion to add a new letter H to section 99-4 that states any employee operating a vehicle involved in an accident, whether the employee is at fault in the accident or not, shall submit to an immediate drug test. If the employee has a commercial license, CDL, the employee must submit to a drug test at an appropriate medical facility and to relabel the letters within that section."
Just for clarification, I think that's "shall," "shall submit."
"Shall submit." Excuse me. Okay. Missed one.
This motion is a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I mean, if you wanted to add in, if you wanted to put the two of those together, the next one regarding medical cannabis in that, you could have, or you could theoretically add those together, this case of having a measure... Either a measurable blood alcohol concentration.
I haven't read them yet, Josh.
What?
I haven't read them yet.
Oh, are you still on the...
No, we're still on this one.
Oh, I got you. I'm following.
Sorry about that.
Okay. Now, yeah.
All right. Did that one get past, that last one?
Yeah, we had a second.
Okay.
Any further discussion, yes? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is approved and the amendment passes.
Okay, the next motion. "I make a motion to amend letter M, section 94-4, to read as follows. An employee shall not operate a vehicle while having either a measurable blood alcohol concentration or within eight hours of having consumed any amount of alcohol beverage or in violation of Maryland Annanated Code, Transportation, Article 21-902."
Motion's a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Yes, Shane, go ahead.
I mean, have we given any thought how you're going to prove that or... I mean, that's a pretty...
Only way you can prove it is that they have an incident. Shane, you know, really. You can't run around, check everybody every day. They'll be in violation if there's an incident, accident, or whatever you want to call it. Or if somebody smells something on somebody's breath in the morning. A coworker.
And that's really not... This doesn't really... This really doesn't state that the county's responsible for this. It's that if this comes back from any law enforcement agency, this is how we address it. It's not asking us to take the... To enforce a drug test. I mean, a blood test.
Put on that.
Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Amendment passes.
Okay, the last one. Didn't you have to go to the restroom or something? "I make a motion to add a new letter N to section 99-4 to read as follows. Wycomico County has a zero tolerance policy for medical or recreational cannabis. Therefore, an employee shall not operate a county vehicle if they consume or use medical or recreation cannabis and to relabel the letters within that section."
This motion is a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I think this one, it might be... So, I mean, as I've said before here, the THC is the problem. I guess the, you know, what if we just simply said Wycomico County has a zero tolerance policy for medical and recreational cannabis? Therefore, an employee shall not be under the effects of THC while operating a county vehicle.
This is the one that we discussed earlier where I think it was accepted that we would just put at the end of the sentence, "in violation of state law." Am I correct?
Yeah, where you can add on that second line on the bottom there.
We don't know what CBD, we don't really know. I don't really know what impact that has on a drive... Someone driving a vehicle. I don't know. I don't even know what state law does. You got a question?
I'm sorry, Mr. President. I just want to make the point, this, the language regarding cannabis, we took the language that we were supplied a month, less than a month ago with a draft of a risk management policy that the county's working on. And this language regarding cannabis is in the proposed risk management policy that the county's putting together. So that's where that came from. And it's basically word for word. The only other point, and I know this is on a different subject, but there was a question raised about the eight hours at use of alcohol. The use of a... That's also was in the proposed risk management policy. So basically, this is just taking what was going to be in a policy that the county was proposing and putting it in the legislation. hours at use of alcohol. The use of, that's also was in the proposed risk management policy. So basically, this is just taking what was going to be in a policy that the county was proposing and putting it in, in the legislation.
All right, thank you, Mr. Benson. Have the motion on the table. Any, any, any recommendations as to whether to continue with the motion as is, or is there any motions to amend it?
Do we have, do we have the, a description of the zero tolerance policy? What exactly zero tolerance means? Does that mean you cannot smoke marijuana while you're on duty? Does it mean you can't smoke it just before work? What does that zero tolerance mean?
I don't have an answer for you. It's just the policy.
Because in theory, not that I'm an advocate for smoking marijuana, just for the record. So you have somebody that smokes marijuana on a Sunday while watching a football game. They come to work Monday. They get in a car accident with a county vehicle. They do a blood test or urine test, shows they have marijuana in their system. Now, they're not under the influence of marijuana, but it's going to stay in their system for thirty plus or minus days.
Exactly. That's the problem.
This is an issue, I mean, this is an issue. I mean, and I know we've talked about this for quite a while, but that's something that we better, before we go saying yays or nays on, you could potentially cost an employee their job when they weren't doing anything wrong.
Yeah, but they could have been at the Ocean's Calling Music Festival a couple days prior and suddenly, you know, you know, they're affected by that, you know, whether they were a part of it or not. They just caught the right breeze off the ocean, you know, like, this is all, but this is real.
That's pushing it, Josh.
I don't know.
I don't know if I'm buying that.
Regardless, I mean, it would likely show up in their system for something that is not their problem or not their issue. Overall, we just want to make sure that no one is under the effects of THC while operating a county vehicle.
Because there's, there's a lot of people out there that are smoking marijuana and...
I smell it and I'm driving.
Right. So this could potentially be something that we're going to be faced with, employee losing her job because they happened to smoke on the weekend, not, not that Monday when they got in a car accident, and now they're terminated.
A zero tolerance policy does not necessarily mean they're going to be terminated. It just means that it will require immediate action upon administration.
My understanding is that that zero tolerance policy is based on federal law, that if you get federal funding, that the federal government has a zero tolerance policy with regard to use of drugs and vehicles.
Mr. President, we do have the HR representatives here. Maybe they can tell us what the current policy is.
Anytime.
Yeah.
Definition of a zero tolerance policy is a strict approach that requires immediate disciplinary action for any violation of a rule.
That is correct on the zero tolerance. If we get any federal funding, such as LMB gets a lot of federal funding, that's where the zero tolerance comes in. We would lose our funding. Right now, it would be, if someone is caught who has, is a safety sensitive, who has CDLs and they are caught with either alcohol or drugs in their system, then they are immediately suspended without pay and they have to attend an EAP program for, is it twelve weeks? I can't remember them. Sorry.
Yeah, they have to go through outpatient.
Outpatient care. And they have to prove that they've attended it and they have to get a medical release from that physician that they have attended that and passed it and are able to come back to work.
So you have already, you have zero tolerance policy in place?
That is already.
This isn't, this will not contradict you.
No. And my new substance abuse section in the new manual also goes into very much detail with progressive discipline regarding alcohol and drugs. So, and that's, that's coming too, so.
Maybe Mr. Benson could elaborate on this. If we don't have a policy, in other words, if we strike this and there's an accident, somebody's got medical, recreation or medical cannabis in their system, the county is going to be liable. And we're going to be more liable if we don't have a policy. If we have a policy and they've broken that policy.
Correct.
Okay, it's on them.
Correct.
If we don't have a policy.
Did you tell them you couldn't do it?
It comes back on.
Exactly, yeah.
So, all right.
I mean, if you adopt this.
And I'll be more than happy to send over my proposed, even though we're not there in the manual yet, what the substance abuse policy is and what the progressive discipline I'm suggesting, and then also, you know, the last section for the vehicle, even though that's already done, but I'll send it over.
It would seem to me that the two options are, you either adopt it as is, and if, if there is a policy, put in the personnel manual that you think supersedes it, you come back and revise this to remove this section, and/or you take it, you don't, you don't pass this on amendment, and if the personnel policy is never placed into effect, you know, two months from now, you come back and amend it, put it back in.
I think, I think what I'm hearing is that this currently as is, right as the amendment is stated, it does not conflict with what your intentions are.
No.
Okay, all right, thank you.
To go back to what Shane was saying, Shane said employees in a whole, okay? We have different classes of employees. We have non-safety sensitive, we have sensitive, and then we have our CDLs, okay? There's different drug testings we have to perform for each one of those classes, okay? Some that don't test for THC because if they have a medical marijuana or if they have some kind of prescription or something.
Medical disability such as seizures like you were suggesting.
They register their card. They're not, that non-safety sensitive is not tested for THC at all. It's a five-panel test. Safety sensitives are a ten-panel test, and they are tested for THC, cocaine, opiates, all that kind of stuff. CDL drivers go to your docent and do the Maryland State Transportation testing. So that is them. So we already follow those guidelines. I mean, that's standard, what we've been doing for years.
What we were missing was the progressive discipline for our non, for the zero tolerance and then just being on the job, being impaired. Everybody's been trained in a supervisory and managerial position for reasonable suspicion for what was suggested earlier. If you smell it on their breath or you smell it on their clothes. So our supervisors and new supervisors and managers were trained on the reasonable suspicion too. So that's part of the risk management plan with legit and everything. Kevin Karshpinski has been a resource as much as possible, even though there's so many unknowns with the Maryland passing, they passed it and didn't give us any guidelines and we've just been trying to find our way through it, so.
It's a lot to get through.
It's a lot.
And for example, just to go back to what Joe said, just because you smell alcohol doesn't mean they're going to test for alcohol because it comes out of their pores. They sweat it out. I've had people, employees, that you can smell alcohol, but when I do a breathalyzer or send them to your docent, nothing at all shows. So it's not always about smelling something.
Quick question, just, do we, do we do any drug testing in-house or is it all outsourced?
The house.
We do it in-house except for our CDLs, or if they test positive on their initial, then we send them for a follow-up at your docent to confirm.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Any other comments in reference to this specific amendment? All those in favor of the amendment say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion's carried, six to one, amendment passes.
Five to one.
I'm sorry, five to one, think about it. Thank you. Any other amendments?
Mr. Cannon, I believe you mentioned that you wanted to make a motion to that section ninety-nine one about the driver's certificate.
Which one was that?
Ninety-nine one.
For ninety-nine, hold on a second.
Ninety-nine three A.
Ninety-nine three, yes.
Ninety-nine three A.
Yeah, yeah, three A. About the thirty days.
Well, I can't make that motion, but the motion would be, the motion would be to insert ninety-nine three A where it states, "Current valid driver's license and a certified copy of their driving record to say, and except for emergencies, a certified copy of their driving record."
So for ninety-nine three A, I make the motion that we will accept in emergencies, they will not have to provide a driving record.
Driving record, correct. Is that a motion, Joe?
Yes.
Okay, we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, amendment passes.
Were we?
Thank you, Ms. Hurley, yes.
Were we also going to amend anything to make it so that it was prior to this date so that it clears up the prior to utilizing a vehicle? Or that way, did we clarify that? That that wasn't going to be an issue?
Yeah, I believe it was when, when we had HR here that the way it's phrased seems to be okay and that way, they wouldn't, I guess they wouldn't have to go back and revisit everybody's records.
I guess so.
Any other questions? Okay. That's the main motion. Okay, so, entertain a motion from council and we'll do it in roll call. All those in favor of legislative bill number twenty-two-four dash twelve as amended, say aye if you're in favor, nay if you're opposed. We'll start with Councilman Holloway. Councilman Hastings?
Aye.
Councilman Winn? Councilman Baker?
Aye.
Councilman Merritt, Vice President Merritt. Councilman Winn?
Yeah, I would, I, no, because I want to have a work session with our HR before we pass this, but I, I, I agree with everything in this bill.
And chair votes aye. Legislative bill number twenty-two-four twelve as amended passes on a vote of five to one. Thank you, Mr. Benson.
Ms. Hurley?
Okay, next on the agenda this morning is a public hearing on resolution number one sixty dash twenty-two-four, and this is to authorize the county executive to execute a lease agreement with the United States of America Department of Transportation, Federal Aviation Administration for the old terminal building. The FAA proposes to lease nine-hundred-and-eighty-two square feet of office space located on the second floor of the old terminal building designated as five-four-seven-seven Airport Road, or Airport Terminal Road in Salisbury, Maryland. The property is to be leased for a term of fifteen years. The annual rent shall be ten thousand nine hundred and twenty through September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four, and thirteen thousand seven hundred and thirty-four dollars for the period of October first, twenty-twenty-four through September thirtieth, twenty-thirty-five. The property will be used by the Federal Aviation Administration for conducting business operations at the Salisbury Ocean City Wacomiko Regional Airport. And we have Mr. Tony Rudy here, Director of Aviation, if you have any questions.
It's time we open the floor for public hearing on resolution number one sixty-two-thousand-and-twenty-four. If you have any comments you'd like to make in regard to this specific resolution, come to the podium, please state your name, your county residence, and your concerns. That concludes the public hearing on resolution one sixty dash two thousand and twenty-four. Entertained a motion, council have approved resolution one sixty-two thousand and twenty-four.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Next is a public hearing on resolution number one sixty-one dash twenty-two-four. This is authorizing a letter of support for a Class B athletic and event facility license in Wacomiko County. The proposed bill would authorize the license holder to sell beer, wine, and liquor for on-premises consumption under certain circumstances and requires the Wacomiko County Board of Licenses Commissioners to adopt regulations, including the hours and days of sale and the annual license fee.
It's time we open the floor for a public hearing on resolution one sixty-one two thousand and twenty-four. If you have any comments you'd like to make, come to podium, please state your name, your county of residence, and your concerns. Come on, John.
Hello, my name is Jeremy Norton and I reside in Wacomiko County. I was born and raised right here in the city of Salisbury, Wacomiko County, and where I have chosen to raise my family and open my businesses. I am one of the owners and the founder of Ready Joe's Bar and Grill. We have two locations, one in Wacomiko County, one in Worcester County. For the past three years, I'm also the operating partner and owner of Crown Sports Center. I currently hold three liquor licenses, one for each of my businesses. Yes, that is correct. Crown Sports Center currently holds a Class B seven-day on-sale, on-premise beer, wine, liquor license. And just about every day of the week, responsible adults choose to consume beer, wine, or spirits in our venue. Crown Sports is not just a kid's sport complex. It is a robust center for community engagement, adult sports, and events of all types. In the approximately six months the Crown has been permitted to sell libations, we have hosted adult-only tournaments consisting of jiu-jitsu, basketball, volleyball, soccer, and arena football. We have hosted Christmas parties, birthday parties, happy hour mixers, corporate events, and the list will continue to grow as we become better known for our ability to host different events. Our current liquor license that we have handcuffs our ability for growth. It limits our footprint to approximately ten percent of our usable space. And much like the Wacomiko County Civic Center, we do have the ability to expand our footprint and also compartmentalize certain areas of our large facility to maintain control. However, unlike our current Civic Center, we must seek approval for every one of these events. A footprint expansion requires about two months' notice to our county liquor board to seek, to approve each individual event and time. Our most recent temporary expansion was for our Salisbury Stakes semi-pro soccer team that hosts professional teams from all over the country. The last team came from Danbury, Connecticut. We are actively booking similar events such as arena football, more soccer events, and we hope to have them year-round. This would require us to go before the county liquor board just about every month to seek approval, with no chance of a last-minute event coming into fruition. While most events are pre-planned and well in advance, sometimes things happen out of necessity, whether it be weather or other venues canceling. And with a lack of proper timetable to facilitate our alcohol requests, we are going to lose out on events. This is not an ideal situation, and the Wacomiko County Liquor Control Board agrees, which is why they have shown support for this amendment in their last meeting on December fourth, twenty-twenty-four. I hope that this board recognizes the valuable time and energy that could be saved with legislation that properly regulates our current venue, while also recognizing the need for growth, not just for Crown Sports Center, but for Wacomiko County as a whole, having another venue that can handle large economic-driving events for our community. Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Norton.
Good morning. Thank you for your time, counsel. I guess I'll start by saying, I'm actually here for the previous bill. I thought we were going to be testing marijuana today. I didn't realize it was all about marijuana tests. That's a joke. I'm kidding. I'm sorry. So I'm a coach at Crown. I'm an owner of Crown. I'm the father of an eight and a five-year-old. I'm at Crown several times a week.
State your name just for the record.
Joey Gilkerson, sorry. Crown is not a five-one C-three, but it does not operate at a profit. We operate it for our community. And a lot of communities, a lot of rural communities are sized. The county is tasked with operating something similar to Crown, but in our community, we operate it. We currently serve beer, wine, and liquor, as Rhodey said, at Crown. We obtained a license this past summer to do that. We're about to be competing with a new one-hundred-million-dollar facility in Worcester County. Worcester County is putting substantial capital efforts and resources towards this. It'll most likely have a full liquor license so that it can compete with its closest competitor in Sussex County in Frederica. Alcohol sales are key in competing for business at Crown, just as it was for the Wacomiko County Youth and Civic Center to compete for business and events. Please help us keep some of our dollars in Wacomiko and help keep us on a level playing field with our neighbor competitors. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gilkerson.
Hi, my name's Joe White. I'm also like Mr. Norton, I'm born and raised here. Also like Mr. Gilkerson, I am a coach at, sometimes at Crown. I'm a volunteer. And I also have a son and daughter, or I have a daughter, not a son. So I want to state for the record that I'm a, I'm a liquor license holder in Worcester County, and I am very pro-business. I think my concern here today is, and I had to go back and review the work session. I thought that the information there that Mr. DeVal provided was not very clear. I do think Mr. Norton actually did a nice job of cleaning up some of that. So six months ago, they were granted a beer, wine, and liquor license for their footprint in their food court, in the party areas. Since that time, in less than four months' time, the liquor control board has given them an exception for six dates. It is, it is ammunition that they're, that they can use. I give you here the, a receipt. This is prior to a youth sports event. This is what it looks like when you sell alcohol fifteen, twenty feet from where youth are practicing, warming up for a game. Their motto, not my motto, is better athletes, better people. I do believe that if you, if you write this letter, I think it's a mistake. Not, not that they cannot go and get their own support, but I want to remind you of one event, and then I'll wrap up. On July first of this year, our current county executive and our former delegate Carl Anderton sat on these steps out in front of this government office building. And Mr. Anderton said, "We've opened the door, we might as well walk through." So my question to you here is, are you sliding the door, the window open a little bit more, and when are we going to stop? Where is, and you're going to take this out of your control, this goes back to Liquor Control Board. After the last work session, you all did not, I don't think you all understood, because I know I didn't. I was, I was misinformed that they already had a liquor license. It was in the email that was sent and, you know, follow-up to this, and that they had the expansion for the six dates, just came in October. But former delegate Anderton said, "We've opened the door, we might as well walk through it." So what would be next? An RFP for the Harry Parker complex to have a beer garden? They have lots of adult softball games there. I mean, who, who here would like to go over to the Parker complex, watch some, you know, guys run around, play softball? I love to play sports. That's why I coach too. And maybe go by and have a beer? Then we can drive out of there, right by the sheriff's office, you know? There's more implication, and I don't think you have enough of the facts. There's one thing Mr. Norton, or Mr. Gilkerson just said that I think, I think just needs a little bit more clarity. Yes, Crown may be run as a nonprofit, but just like I have, you break your businesses down into different... down into different entities. So, is this restaurant and catering business, is it part of the nonprofit? Not 501(c)(3), he did not state that. But is that part of it, or is this actually where you extract some profit there? If it is, it's fine, but we need to make sure that the public interest is sought. So, that's all. Thanks.
Joe White. Any other public comments? Includes the public comments on resolution number one sixty-one, two thousand twenty-four. Entertained a motion from council to approve resolution one sixty-one, two thousand twenty-four.
To move.
Second. Discussion. Mr. DeValle, did you have anything you wanted to?
Did the folks come up?
Yes.
Folks, you know me, Richard DeValle, I'm the attorney for the board. This is my board chairperson.
Jennifer Jordan, Chair of the Wacomiko Board of License Commissioners.
I think she'd like to go first, and then I'll come in and try to address some of the details.
So.
So, thank you for bringing us back after the previous work session. To summarize again why we're here is, the Wacomiko County Board of License Commissioners was approached by the Crown Athletic Facility with a proposal for how they would like to grow their business beyond what they're currently doing. And we recognize, the board recognized that while they also serve as a youth athletic facility, they also serve many other functions for this county. Adult activities, they have the semi-pro professional soccer league, they have corporate meetings, they are available for rental for adult parties, birthday parties, whatever it is. So, we as a board looked at that and recognized they play an important part in the business of Wacomiko County. And it is our intention as a board to make sure that we do whatever we can to help the county succeed in the business environment. And we don't want some of these activities or events that could be held here in Wacomiko County traveling to neighboring counties, when we can certainly capture it right here. That being said, we also looked at the license, the alcohol license structure for the county that are in existence. And we realized that we currently do not have, Wacomiko County currently does not have a license that fits the athletic facility and the event facility to do the types of events that they would like to do at Crown, and at any other facility that would like to open here in Wacomiko County. We recognize it's a large county. There are other opportunities potentially in this county to have another facility similar to what we have with Crown open up in a different area, and we certainly don't want to have anything to preclude that. So, when looking at the licenses that are currently available, we realized there isn't one. There's a license for the civic center that is just for the civics, excuse me, the civic center. There's a license for the stadium that's just for the stadium. So, we recognize that in order to do this, we needed to create a new license. That has to be done through legislation, which of course, we have written. And then we came to you a few weeks ago and presented that legislation. We recognize when crafting this, that we're dealing with a facility that has youth activities, but also has adult activities. That fact is not lost on the board. When crafting the legislation and based on feedback from you all at the last work session, we did make sure that we put into the draft for the bill that the board, our board, the Wacomiko County Board of License Commissioners, will adopt regulations, and I can read it to you. The board shall adopt regulations prior to the effective date of the legislation prohibiting the consumption of alcohol by spectators and other participants in youth athletic and other youth events. So, we acknowledge that youth events are happening there. We also acknowledge as a board that we will do everything in our power to ensure that alcohol is not sold and consumed in conjunction with these youth events. We recognize we have a very unique facility in this county, and our intent is to be able to allow them to do a multitude of events while also being responsible with the youth activities and not having alcohol present at that. And that's sort of where we are. We are a very, I can tell you about our board. It was a very robust conversation among our five-member board, ensuring to the fact that we are very cognizant of the activities that take place down there with youth. We are very cognizant about keeping alcohol out of that. We have a very strong enforcement arm, and it's not something that we will not be continuing to monitor and enforce if it does go through and the legislation is approved.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Cannon. So, let me comment first on the comments made by the gentleman in the public comment period. And I don't think he knew what I'm about to tell you, because it was a letter that I had written to Mr. Cannon and the executive juror Dana when we were proposing this law. So, we say that they're a request of the owners of Crown Center in Fruitland, Maryland, for an alcohol license in conjunction with sporting and other events at the Crown Center. Under current law, there is no license that would accommodate Crown's request to licensed consumption in the spectator areas of the Crown facility. Instead, the board issued Crown, and this is the important part, I suppose, issued Crown a Class B restaurant license, which limits the area within the facility for the consumption of alcohol. So, I didn't probably clarify that point at the last session, but it was in a letter to the board, and the gentleman would not have known that, because he wouldn't have seen the letter in advance of this hearing. To Ms. Jordan's point on the modifications to the bill since the last time we met, you also asked that we take out the minimum capital requirement, which we did, and engrafted that into the regulatory section of the statute. The prohibition on the alcohol regulation with respect to youth activities, I said this at the last hearing, if we make it a regulation that we have to write the board rather than a statutory provision, we can address issues that we may have missed in controlling that consumption of alcohol in conjunction with youth activities by regulation rather than statute, which would bring us back to the next year for another statutory session, and that was believed to be a more flexible and efficient means by which to control for alcohol consumption in connection with the youth services. I can tell you that the board is very attuned to the issue of the youth sporting events. We're well aware of the perennial problem going back even to my day, when I had my boys over there some twenty years ago, where parent spectators can get out of control, even if they're not alcohol involved. And alcohol has the tendency, of course, to exacerbate some of that. So, we're aware of that, we'll control for it. And let me, I think it might be helpful to the board, we sent a supplemental package in your brief book. There's a letter that addresses the one-day licenses for the men's soccer league, but it also contains at page five of that letter, a diagram of where the license space is. So, in the blue, if you have that in color, if you don't have it in color, it's the area marked off in a large rectangle. That's the license space now for the Class B restaurant license. It does include more than the dining area, which is in the cafe. There's an adjacent room denominated as an arcade room, and then next to that, I think it's hard for me to read what it is, but I'm told by the applicants that it's used as a dining area and an overflow area for private parties and that sort of thing. That is the licensed area out of which no alcohol may be consumed or carried. The long rectangular piece, which is in red on my diagram, do you all have it in color? Okay. All right. That's the extension for the six nighttime soccer games where from six to ten, consumption is permitted. There's pictures in the packet that show where that area is, but if you're familiar with the site, when you walk in, there's a hallway that runs the length of the building. I'm going to call it a hallway for lack of a better term. That's where this is. It carries over into the stands in front of a soccer field. That expansion is limited to that red demarcation. There's no alcohol consumption or carrying of alcoholic beverages permitted anywhere else in the building under the current status. With respect to the arcade and the party room, years ago, you may not, you may or may not recall, there was a Chuck E. Cheese in town that was purely, purely for parents and their kids to go to. It had an alcohol license as a restaurant. The Hoppers here in the South thirteen has a large open area where you can play cornhole and all that sort of thing. It's open, there's youth present with their families, that's part of their alcohol-licensed area. And then also, I'm just giving you analogous licenses. There is a license at Taylor's Barbecue Restaurant, where there's a child's play area in front of the restaurant, and between it and Route thirteen. It's fenced in. I can tell the board, and Ms. Jordan can chime in, in each of these cases, when there's ever any youth that would be in conjunction, well, on the same premise as adults consuming alcohol, the board's very careful to put in the proper controls that it thinks are advisable to prevent any problems. So, I guess the analogy, is there other restaurants in town that have this? It's not unusual. The thing that makes this difference is it's a large sports complex, and they're not playing competitive soccer at the other venues I just mentioned. That's the difference. But this regulation-writing provision will allow us, and I won't tell you that I'll cover everything, because it's difficult to think of everything that you might put in there. And again, to be, not to be redundant, but that's why we made it a regulation, so we can come back and fix it if we didn't get it all covered.
And also to clear up, too, we recognize that they currently do hold, and Mr. Merritt and I had conversations yesterday, they currently, the Crown Center currently does hold a Class B beer, wine, liquor restaurant license. If the legislation does move forward up in Annapolis with the support of you, of the council, and that legislation is passed, it goes into effect July one of two thousand twenty-five. At that time, the existing Class B beer, wine, liquor restaurant license that is currently held, at that time, that license will then be revoked, and then they will have to come back before the board, I'm sorry, surrendered, surrendered, sorry, surrendered properly. At that time, that they would then make an application for the new event facility license, they would come back before the Board of License Commissioners. It would be, it's a public hearing, everything is open to public comment, and then they would come back before us, again, present their plans now as the facility as a whole, where again, as a board, we would have an opportunity to put out the regulations that we have adopted with regards to alcohol consumption and youth activities at, within conjunction with the new legislation. So, just to know that, that they wouldn't then go forward with two licenses, it would be an exchange, a sense.
Yeah, the adoption of the regulations would be part of a public hearing.
Absolutely.
The new application for the new license, if it's passed, would be advertised twice in the paper and posted on the property, as was done when the current license was granted. So, there were two ads running the paper on the current license. The property was posted at the main entrance, which if you're familiar, is that side door coming in off of that parking lot. And there was another posting about fifty feet in from Route thirteen on that entrance road that most people used to get into the building. So, that's, I'm just telling you that, so you know the process that'll occur when the, if the new license is created, what they would have to do to be granted it, okay?
And we're open for any other questions.
You mentioned that the civic center and the stadium have a special license?
Yes.
Other than the size of those facilities compared with Crown, why wouldn't Crown fall under one of those licenses?
It was dependent on the activities that Crown is looking to do with their expansion.
I can answer that.
That's a legal question, right?
Yeah. So, in each of those two cases, the stadium license is called the stadium license. They're limited to those facilities, I guess. I don't know the exact title of the youth civic center license, but that was a license specifically for that venue in each case.
Same for the shorebirds, yeah.
And I suspect that there's a lot of language in the stadium license that probably would be inapplicable to what this request is.
I'd just say, I think this makes total sense. You've got reputable business folks who've been in, you know, they've done this enough times, they already have current licenses. The footprint expansion doesn't really seem like it's all that much different. I'm sure they'll take extra precautions to say, you know, alcohol behind this space. But we already know that we've already have this at other, at many other locations or many other, you know, shorebird stadiums or others. I think for me, the biggest, for me, my real concern on alcohol is usually the on-premise versus off-premise. The problems that I've always seen most of my life is not going to, you know, a bar, restaurant, or event space and seeing people out of control. It's usually when someone goes and buys, you know, handle liquor somewhere and then go takes it off to, you know, share with others under no, you know, where they're not being checked, where there's not any kind of extra controls in place. So, I think this makes total sense, and I'd love to see you go for it.
In our conversation, I asked about enforcement?
Yes.
And they would, if this makes it to the finish line, they would fall under the same enforcement policies and procedures?
Absolutely.
Bars and restaurants and everybody else?
Absolutely. We obviously have our own investigative unit as part of the Board of License Commissioners, and this facility would fall under all other regulations and inspections and alcohol checks, as does everybody else in the county, yes.
There's a variety of sanction tools that the board has if there were a violation of the limitations on the use of the alcohol, ranging anywhere from a fine to a suspension to a revocation.
Absolutely.
It would be dependent upon the circumstances, which sanction was imposed, but.
Would you suspect that there might be even more eyes on this type of situation than?
I think between ourselves and the owners of the facility, everyone is hyper-aware of what we're getting into, so I would expect, actually as the chair of the board, the expectation would be when this, if and when this license goes into effect, that, yeah, there's a high expectation that things are done the way they need to be done.
I guess my disappointment is that you didn't reveal the last time you were here that there was already a license.
Our apologies on that. It was.
I'm going to say on that, it was in my letter to Mr. Cannon before the hearing, and maybe, but I took it for granted, I suppose, and that's why I didn't bring it up. Maybe I should have.
Our apologies for not being proactive on that.
I wanted to bring it up.
You know, it's, we were getting calls, you know, people watch these meetings, we were getting calls, you know, from like people, coaches and stuff, and referees. The, who's, how many inspectors do you all have?
We have one inspector.
For the whole county?
Well, there's, I'm sorry, there's two. One full-time, one part-time.
Part-time. You said you talked to the executive. Do you have her endorsement on this?
We did mention that we were going forward with this, and she indicated that there were no issues from her office.
How are you going to control, it's like the gentleman at the podium said last night, somebody bought an alcoholic beverage and within twenty feet of a child's sports event. So, will this mean, if there's a child's sports event, when this passes, if it passes, that people will be able to buy alcohol and then go sit in the stands and watch their children play?
That would be expressly prohibited by the regulations.
Yes, that's part of the amendment that we made to the bill after the work session, where we did put in there that the board will be adopting regulations that are prohibiting the consumption of alcohol by spectators and other participants in youth athletic and other youth events. So, there will be regulations in place that do not allow for the sale or consumption of alcohol when youth sporting activities are taking place.
So, should not we put that in our letter?
It's going to be in the bill.
It's going to be in the, it's part of the bill.
It's written into the bill as a result of the work session last time at Mr. Cannon, and I suppose that the whole board's request that we add that, and we did. So, your letter. letter, so if you have, what we sent to you is the markup of the original bill that we submitted. So it's got the markup language that we put in as a result of that last work session. And that's what you would be voting on today as a recommendation. Now, I can, I can just do a clean bill without the markup to go up there, but, but that's what's going to go up to Annapolis. Now, I sent this, I sent this to Delegate Adams and the bill drafter, and I have not heard back from them on their comment that they had one with respect to the way it was marked up, which I had hoped to have before I met with you today. And it may be, if they have a comment that they would word it in a different fashion, I can't imagine they're going to take that out, the substance of it, but they may want to word it differently. The drop dead dates, as I think Mr. Hastings pointed out at the last meeting, are February 3 for the Senate and February 7 for the House. So there is time, if they want some kind of rewording, and whether that would need to come back to you for approval, I don't know, but certainly if, if you wanted it to, contact with Mr. Delegate Adams' office would be appropriate.
I worry about, you know, this, this, this facility's been promoted as a youth sports facility all these years and that's basically what they're still doing. So that's my issue with it.
I understand that. I, I do think they're, they're trying to do a little bit of a pivot also when faced with competition from neighboring counties.
Yeah.
So it's, it's something that, that we as a board, we're trying to be flexible with. We want to see the business stay here in Wycomica County, to be very honest with you. We don't want it jumping over to Worcester or any other county. So we're, we're trying to, to give them a little grace, Mr. Holloway, to pivot and amend their business plan while recognizing that, yes, they have predominantly been known as, as a youth sports facility, but we're also recognizing that their business is trying to change and, and grow and adapt. And we're, we're trying to give them the ability to do that.
I, I see this as, as really an easy lift. The, the Board of Licensed Commissioners, you've been doing this for a long time and, and we have to respect what you've done over the years. I mean, in some instances.
Thank you.
You've been criticized because people have felt that you're, that you're too hard, but there's nothing wrong with that. And I think you're taking that into consideration with this. There's already been a restaurant license and there's no violations on the restaurant license.
To this date, no.
Yeah, there's been none. I know Mr. Norton had made the comment that he has three licenses. So he's obviously well-established and following the, and in good standing, which I think's important. And the owners, I mean, I know these owners, they have their own children. So, and their children have attended these events. So I'm sure they don't want to see violations personally. So I'm, I'm confident to put this into hands, pretty much to put this hands in the Board of Licensed Commissioners. I think that's really what we're being asked to do.
Thank you.
Through the letter. So that would be my comment. Any other?
I, I did contact the Fruitland Police Department over the weekend and, because I wanted to find out how many times they've had to visit Crown in the past 12 months. And the answer I got back was one. So far less than the number of times they've had to respond for shoplifting complaints at another location in Fruitland. So.
Acknowledged. Thank you.
Just for the public's knowledge that.
Yeah.
And that's maybe partially in, do in part to the owner's oversight and trying to keep things down to a dull roar.
Any other comments, questions? All this in favor of Resolution 161-2024, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion is carried four to two in favor of Resolution 161-2024. Resolution 161-2024 passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Shane Jones.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, board members.
Next is the submission of the capital improvement program for fiscal years 2026 through 2030. We have Mrs. Pam Olin here, Director of Finance.
Good morning, Ms. Olin.
Good morning.
Just watch yourself. Watch yourself there.
Thank you, Pam.
Thank you. All right. Thank you.
2023, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
24 is.
It should be on the day. Should be on time.
Do or?
Okay. One's for Shane, one's for Shane. Okay. Did you get one of Bob's?
Yeah.
Okay.
You have three minutes, Ms. Olin.
That's fine. I'm, I'm perfectly fine with three minutes. So as required by the charter, we are required to submit the CIP plan by the third Tuesday in December. I have submitted the CIP plan by the third Tuesday in December. I want you to be aware of how it is set up. As with prior years, you have a cover memo, you have a listing that summarizes all costs, and then each individual project is in an Excel spreadsheet that goes out five fiscal years, 26 through 30, as well as splits out how we intend to fund those costs. Each individual section then has a write-up about each project. Each project in that write-up also explains how the funding is to be accomplished, in what fiscal years, and details associated with each project. I am, as I have stated, this is being submitted. I am requesting counsel, if you have any work sessions that you want to schedule in the month of January or February, I will gladly attend those to meet with you and discuss each of these projects. I do want you to be aware that there is one, and it was brought up at the public hearing, Fruitland Primary is funded. There is about an $8 million cost to the county. There's also about $6 million that the state has said that they have available to fund. That leaves a $27 million delta. That is state funding required, but not available by the state. So to keep this project on task, most likely, the county is going to have to forward fund $27 million. So to keep this project and actually start construction in the next fiscal year, the county will be required to come up with our $8 million plus an additional $27 million. We are working with our bond counsel and I will have more information available to counsel when we want to discuss this at a work session as to how we can accomplish that. I've been working with bond counsel. I have been working with our financial advisors as to the best method associated with our, us doing that. You will find in multiple write-ups within this CIP that departments requested funding for specific projects and those projects have been postponed on the schedule. So they might have requested something for fiscal '27 and we pushed it out to '28, '29 because of having to forward fund, because right now, it looks like we're going to have to forward fund state share in both '26 and '27 to about the tune of $47 million. So that is financial impact to the county's budget. So I'm putting that out on the table. I don't have all the documents with me, so I really, I just wanted you to be aware of that as you're reading that, reading this and formulating your questions. I would request that if you have any questions ahead of work sessions, I would greatly appreciate any, for any of those questions being submitted with some time for me to make sure I formulate the answers to the level of detail that will satisfy your question. Again, some questions you may come up with at a work session. I understand that, but I may have to then defer your answer till I have an opportunity to gather further information. So I think I've hit my three minutes and we are presented.
Thank you very much, Ms. Olin.
I do have one quick question. Is this posted online yet?
It has not posted online. I present to counsel and then we will.
And then you'll post it.
And then we will get it posted. It will be under the finance section of the budget or of the, it'll be under Wycomico County Department's Finance CIP proposed for fiscal '26 through '30. So I sent, I do not have the ability to post directly. I will send that to IT. They have been typically able to turn that around within the same day. So my intention is to send that to them this afternoon. Hopefully, it is out there today, this afternoon. Otherwise, it will be out there tomorrow.
Ms. Olin.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Okay. Next is Resolution Number 162-2024. This is approving and publishing the dates of the official holidays for county employees for the year 2025. And we have Mrs. Donna O'Hara here, Director of Human Resources.
Donna O'Hara, Director of.
Entertaining motion from Council to approve Resolution 162-2024. Second, discussion. Good morning.
Good morning.
Any questions from Council?
So what's the difference in this year and last, in the next year? Is there any?
There is a difference. The county executive would like to humbly request that we have a half-day on Christmas Eve and then the day after Christmas. I did some.
Day on the day after Christmas or a full day?
A full day is, yes.
Will that be a paid vacation?
No, they would, it would be a holiday for them.
Be a holiday.
And I did.
Excuse me.
I'm sorry.
Will they be paid for that?
They will be paid.
They will be paid for that. That's my question. That was my question.
I did some surveying of the other counties just as a little bit of background. And we still are the lowest on our days off, our paid days off, when you add up personal days, vacation days, and holidays. And I did speak with Somerset, Worcester. Worcester has it as a standard holiday to have all day off on Christmas Eve. Anna Rundle does a half-day on Christmas Eve and a half-day on New Year's Eve. Let's see. Cecil does Christmas Eve. Basically, over half of them do either Christmas Eve or the day after Christmas, depending on how it falls on the year. So any consideration for adding one or both of those requests would be greatly appreciated. And I do want to say on behalf of all the employees who have reached out to me that they really appreciated the extra personal days that you approved. So our salaries are still pretty far behind, so we're trying to look for ways that we can give them a little bit of a thank you for their work.
Just, I guess, curious on, if someone's Jewish, do we give them extra days off for Hanukkah or high holidays?
That's a great question. And, and actually, we do accommodate, if they have a special religious accommodation that they ask for, we give that to them. So.
Could they trade out, say, Christmas for?
Sure, absolutely.
Good. Yeah. I think that, I made that point last time, just honestly, that I may celebrate Christmas, but I understand lots of other, other people may not, so.
Right, right. And that's part of our policy is to, if they have a special religion and that they observe on a specific day, that that is, that we observe that for them.
You know what the city's doing?
The city, I do not. But they actually, let me see, I did survey them. They did not give me a response on that one, but that's probably pretty easy to, it's probably pretty easy to get that. They follow us. Okay.
Follow us? You got a question?
Just for clarification on Mr. Hastings' question regarding, you know, giving the day off for Hanukkah, would that be a paid day off for those?
They, they are allowed to have that day off as a holiday. Well, it's not as a designated how, they, they could use that time. So it would be paid. Now, that is a good ques, okay. I apologize. We allow them, we can't keep them here and say no to them being off, but that is something we would need to address. Yeah.
And I did contact the city of Salisbury and she did provide me with the list of her 2025 approved holidays and they're only giving off Christmas Day.
Christmas Day, okay.
Next year.
Next year.
Okay.
Which falls on a what?
Thursday.
Thursday. So they're gonna, they're gonna be open Friday, the city is.
According to their approved holiday schedule as of right now, yes.
And sometimes what happens is, is that gets close to it, and the state even does this a lot of times, is as it gets closer, the week of, the two weeks before that, they'll say, okay, we're gonna go ahead and close earlier. We're gonna close. And that mayor may not happen. I have no idea. It could or couldn't, you know, the mayor may say, yep, let's close down. So that happens too. So.
Donna, can you jog my memory? Was it last year that we gave two additional?
You did. You, correct. It does still put us behind on all total days off, behind the other counties and the city. But again, it was greatly appreciated. It was a move in the right direction 100%. So.
Just for clarification, that those two extra days you gave aren't effective until 2025.
January.
2025.
Yeah.
They couldn't use it this year.
Right. And this isn't for this year. You've already declined for us to have, this is for 2025.
Who's in favor of Resolution 162? Yes?
I would like, I don't know if everyone's okay with Friday, but I know the, the Christmas Eve, I'm completely fine with. And I would like to make a motion if everybody is okay with at least Christmas Eve having half a day, if that would be.
It's already in there.
Yeah, but this motion is for Christmas Eve and Friday. And if people have a problem with Friday being off on that Friday, then I don't want to cancel both days when we can at least get the half-day for Christmas Eve.
If you're making, if, if you want to make a motion to amend, it would be to amend what's currently in the.
Yeah.
Resolution, and that's already in the resolution?
Right, right.
You're just, I mean, it sounds to me like you're just asking people not to give up the Friday.
Ex, not to, not to give up the Christmas Eve. Because I, I think the Friday, I mean, I, I would think that's kind of a confrontational topic because it's, it's a workday. But Christmas Eve is, you know, it's Christmas Eve and a lot of people celebrate Christmas Eve. And I would like to make a motion that we take out the Friday and keep the Christmas Eve unless, unless everyone's okay with having Christmas Eve and Friday off.
There's a motion on the floor to eliminate Friday as a holiday. Is there a second?
Shouldn't, before.
There's a motion, there's a motion, there's a motion to amend the resolution to eliminate Friday from the schedule of holidays. Is there a second?
Second.
And a discussion. Shane?
Shouldn't we get a consensus on the first one before we start eliminating something on?
He's already doing that. He's suggesting that we remove Friday from this list.
Well.
He's suggesting that we remove Friday from this list.
Is, I mean, just not to backtrack, because I guess we can go back, but is there a consensus that we would be moving Friday off the list?
Find out.
Find out.
You got a motion and a second.
Alright.
I understand. I, I believe me, I'm as conservative as anybody, but I think it's, I just never have liked the idea of, of letting everybody, or having everybody take off on Thursday and everybody comes back on Friday. You, you know, you cut the electric back on, you bring everything back up again, and then you shut it down on Saturday. I've just been, if you're gonna shut it off on Thursday.
The city's gonna be here, the bill's.
Let it go Friday. Well, they said that, someone said they're gonna do what we're doing. I don't know. But from, from, I'm not worried about the city. And I, I get that joke, but from my perspective, if you're gonna do Thursday, do Friday. And that's the only time I really think it's acceptable.
We're, we're here to serve the citizens.
I understand.
If it's Thursday, I'm, can I finish my statement, Joe? Say whatever you want. I'll just say it once more. I'm okay with, I'm okay with the schedule. Thank you. And I think Friday's a good thing because I don't want to shut everything down and everybody come back. Half the people aren't gonna be here anyway.
Yeah. And it was, what, 60 degrees when we came back?
Any other, any other questions? Joe, any comments?
I have a comment. If, if they want Friday off, they can use one of their personal days.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
I support James's motion.
Okay.
I'll support James's motion.
It's, it's fine. It's good.
I mean, historically, when either the county closed, the city closes with us, no matter if it's in their holiday plan or not. They normally do follow us. So most likely, if we have Friday, they're gonna be closed too. They'll add it to their plan. They, in this building, one has never been open without the other.
If we're open Friday, maybe they'll be open Friday too, right? You know, we're here, we're here to serve, we're here to serve the citizens. We gave two more extra days last year. Was it two days extra we give in personal days? If somebody wants to take Friday off, they can use one of their, that Friday off, they can use one of their personal days. That's the reason we did that, because there was some discrepancy about different holidays. So that's the reason.
holidays. So, that's the reason that we did the two extra hot, the two extra personal days.
Any other questions, comment?
I'm, Bob.
All those in favor of the amendment to eliminate Friday from the holiday schedule, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
I'm opposed, chairs opposed. So, uh, could, I couldn't hear everybody say. Who, who wants to eliminate Friday? Could you, uh, Joe, Josh?
I would say, I don't want to eliminate Friday.
It's your motion.
No, no. I don't want to eliminate Friday. I just brought that motion forward, 'cause I didn't know-
Okay.
-if everybody wanted it eliminated or not.
Shane?
So, now you don't want to eliminate?
I just, I just brought up the idea of it, and I guess it carried into a motion.
Shane?
Take the motion. I know I did. Are you gonna not surrender your own motion?
Shane, no.
Yeah. I, I, I support James. If that's what he wants to do, not eliminate Friday, then that's-
All right, so your motion is, um, your motion is no. You're against the amendment?
Yes.
Okay. Jeff?
Four.
The chair's against it. I believe that's a four-two. Yeah, uh, the, the, uh, motion, uh, fails. All right, now, getting back to the original motion, uh, entertaining motion, uh, all those in favor of Resolution 162-2024, say aye.
Aye.
Oppo-, opposed? Uh, Resolution 162-2024 passes unanimously.
Thank you, and Merry Christmas.
A lot of employees will be happy.
Thank you.
I'm nervous wreck when I come here.
You did great. Thanks.
Nobody bites. Nobody bites.
Ms. Hurley?
The next item for businesses, Resolution Number 163-2024. This is authorizing the county executive to accept a stipen, stipend of a thousand dollars from the All Rise Treatment Court Institute for the Circuit Court Adult Drug Treatment Court Program.
Entertaining motion from Council to approve Resolution 163-2024. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes. Thank you, Ms. Hurley. Mr. Benson?
There for, uh, the introduction of emergency legislation, Bill 2024-13. It is, uh, an emergency act to amend Chapter 225 of the Wacomico County Code titled Zoning, Part Six, titled Accessory and Principal Uses, Article 18, titled Principal Uses, Section 225-67, titled Table Permitted Uses Designations, and Part Seven, titled Density and Dimensional Regulations, Article 19, titled Density and Dimensional Regulations, enumerated, Section 225-70, titled Setback Requirements, and Part Eight, titled Special Standards for Particular Uses, Article 20, titled Uses and Standards, Particular Uses to Establish, Section 225, 103.1, titled Medical Clinic, to Regulate Outpatient Medical and Dental Care Facilities with Three or More Physicians in Wacomico County. This is a bill to amend the zoning code for Wacomico County that relates to, um, medical facilities. And Mr. Illuminati is here, and I believe he's accompanied by the Director of Planning and Zoning, if the Council has questions.
Thank you, Mr. Benson. Entertaining motion from Council to introduce legislative Bill 2024-13. Second?
Second.
Any discussions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Introduction to legislative Bill 2024-13 passes. Thank
Good morning, Council President Cannon and Wacomico County Council. My name is Anjali Chantel. I am the internal auditor, and I'm here to present Resolution Number 164-2024, amending the Wacomico County Anonymous Reporting Hotline Manual.
Entertaining motion from Council to approve Resolution 164-2024. Second?
Second.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Chantel?
Thank you. So, um, this, uh, amendment, uh, to the hotline SOP, it includes several things. The first is, um, a way to mail in complaints. So, there was, um, some concerns that were brought to my attention, uh, regarding people not, um, filing complaints, because the, um, they could, if they call in, that it could be record, it's, it's a recording, and so somebody could access the recording and then identify them by the, the audio. Um, and then, some people aren't necessarily, uh, tech savvy, or, or, or they maybe don't have computers to file the, you know, reports, um, online. Um, and so, so having a paper method, um, we thought was important. So, this, um, so, so now there's a way that you can still do the online version, if you approve this. Um, you could still do the phone call, uh, to the hotline, and then to mail in the, uh, complaint to the internal auditor. And then, in this process, um, I would type in the contents of the paper complaint into the hotline system, so that there's still a tracking ID, and then it can still get sent to the investigator to investigate. Um, so that's the first part of this. Um, there's also a template form that would be, that's, that's part of this manual. And then, uh, if you approve the manual, then I would upload that to the, uh, IA website for anybody to just print. And then it would also be linked on the, um, the hotline website, uh, where the phone number is. And then, uh, later on, there's a $400 fee if we want to change the script. Um, but I, I feel like talking about the cost, that $400 is, is a topic for another day, maybe, but just, so on the manual itself. Um, the other thing is that, uh, with this, uh, the administrator can, uh, determine if there's a case conflict. So, currently, only the investigator would say, "Oh, I think there's a conflict here. Uh, I can't investigate this." And then I would reassign it to somebody else. But, uh, with this new process, like, if, um, if a complaint is specifically against a council member, then the council attorney wouldn't be, 'cause that council attorney serves at the, um, uh, pleasure of the, the council, right? So, it would then be assigned to the county attorney. Um, whereas if it was just a, a council employee, you know, then the investigator could investigate, right? So, um, it, it would just be the, uh, if I felt there was a conflict, or whoever the administrator is, that they could, uh, reassign it. The next thing is, um, that it removes that emails should not generally reference a case number and names, like, in the same email. It's just not workable. Um, people want to, uh, we're talking about, you know, a case or whatever, and they might want to say, you know, you know, "I talked to whoever," or whatever. So, so that requirement that the name not be in that email isn't there anymore. But, uh, then was added or modified the confidentiality language. So, um, instead of saying that, that the, the hotline is confidential, um, it says that we're committed to confidentiality. Um, and the, the language for that confidentiality statement, uh, it's very similar to what the hotline company has as their confidentiality statement, 'cause somebody's identity could become known during an investigation, right? Um, then, the, uh, I, I think that's it. Uh, oh, and then, um, on the first page, it has like a, a date, and it says TBD. So, if you approve this today, then I would change that to today's date.
Uh, we did have a question from the, uh, from the public, uh, that was stating that they felt there was a concern. Um, they made the comment that, um, uh, they thought there might be a concern or a conflict with the, with the Wacomico County Attorney delegating any hotline reports in reference to the Executive's office.
Yeah, so, so that's why, um, so, so like I mentioned just now, for the council attorney, it would be the same for the county attorney. So, if there's a complaint against the executive, or if, if the complaint specifically mentions, not necessarily that it is the executive, but somebody, but then somehow has that word "executive" in it, um, or the executive office in it, then that would go to the council attorney instead of the county attorney. And then, so I would make that decision, rather than me sending it directly to that county attorney up front. It would go to the council attorney.
Okay. Um, I was trying to go through this again to see, where is it stated in here? 'Cause I, I know in two-two, 2.2 Investigators, it says, "Wacomico County Attorney to delegate all of the cases to applicable departments, i.e., the executive, the sheriff, state attorney, and circuit court." Where does it say in here that, um, um, the responsibility would be transferred to the Wacomico County Attorney?
So, um, the, the investigator section, that's how it would normally flow currently. So, those would be the actual, that's the investigator. So, where it says, like, "Wacomico County Attorney to delegate all the cases that are, for the applicable departments", then that Wacomico County Attorney is the investigator. But, in the-
Is it 507D?
It's 4.5.
Yeah, in, in-
Okay.
In 4.5, where it says recusal and exclusion, that's where it says, "The hotline administrator may also determine there is a case conflict, such as if a complaint is against a council member or the executive." And then the hotline administrator will assign another investigator to the case. And so, rather than it saying there that if it's a complaint against the executive, that it goes to the council attorney, if it's a complaint against the council, it goes to the county attorney, it just, it, it's just going to a different investigator. And part of that theory is, um, just as part of drafting, like, SOPs or, or whatever, that the, who the investigators are could change in time. So, um-
I, I understand what you're saying. But, and I didn't catch it, I, it just, it was brought up, and I'm kinda glad it did, because-
Yeah.
-it seems like you're having to create an exception in Section 4, whatever. But, I don't understand why it's even included in 2.2. Um, it's a clear conflict. Uh, you would never have an, an employee who is, um, hired by a specific department head, including the executive, then be, even be noted that they might, um, pass some type of, make some type of decision relevant to that in a outline complaint. And this clearly says that, "The Wacomico County Attorney to delegate all of the cases to the applicable departments." And you put the executive, sheriff, attorney, and circuit court. And what am I missing there? 'Cause it sounds like that you're saying that there's a complaint, uh, with the executive. And I think this is what confused the, the, the citizen here. You're saying that, are you saying that the executive, i- is it a complaint against the executive, or cases that come in under the, um, authority of the executive? I'm confused on that.
Yeah, I, I was thinking, when we drafted this, um, I was thinking the authority of the executive. So, 'cause there's like the finance department, the HR department, and so forth. So, all of those departments, they, they're under the authority of the executive, and so that's why I had that word, in, in the parentheses, "the executive," um, for, for all of those departments.
Do you think it needs to be a little more, which section was the other one, four, what? I'm sorry.
Four, 4.5.
Five.
4.5.
You think it might be necessary to maybe, um, expand a little bit, uh, wait a whole second? Uh, okay. So, you do say, "The hotline administrator may also determine there is a case conflict, such as if a complaint is against a council member or the executive office. The hotline administrator will assign another investigator to the case." Okay, I think that's clear enough. Okay, I'm, I'm glad they brought it up, but I understand, it's clear enough.
Yeah, and, and it was, it was kinda drafted a little bit vaguer in that recusals area, because over time, you know, the, these, there's four different people listed currently under the investigators, but over time, you could have the HR director come back on as an investigator, or whoever. There could be other investigator types. And so, that's why the recusals is just that, when there is a conflict that the administrator sees as a conflict, that then that person can reassign it as well.
Any other questions from, all those in favor of Resolution 164-2024, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Thank you. Um, and then, uh, sorry, first I'm blanking my words here. Uh, project update. So, I'm just gonna discuss with you really quickly the fiscal year 25 plans, the status of all the audits, 'cause I haven't presented an audit in a while. Um, so let me just grab that document. So, it just is an FYI, for wrapping up fiscal year 2024 audits not yet completed on June 30th, 2024, the leave audit, uh, and the P-card audit, both of those, I've submitted some questions, I've submitted drafts, and we are pending, um, I, I'm pending, uh, responses to some of these questions, uh, clarifications or confirmations on, on some of these items. Um, and, so, so they, they all, both, um, audit-y areas for those two audits have drafts, and, and they have, they know what, I, I think they know what they need to try to, uh, get for me to, to confirm that the, the drafts are, uh, acceptable, um, or, or if more information is needed. So, basically, there's, there's still some small testing left of, um, wha-, what I would like to call is root cause analysis, rather, so, you know, I, I can, I can see that there's something here, right? But then, you know, w- why is this here, and so what's gonna be that best recommendation? So, getting to these best recommendations, part of this is, is that additional information needed? Does that make sense? Okay, okay. So, that's those two. Um, and then, uh, the, today, we had the entrance for the Roads Division audit, the special events audit for the Safari at the Quarry. Uh, they also have a draft, and, uh, hopefully, they will be approving that soon. And the grant audit, we started it, but it's on pause, and we're working on restarting it in January. As you, uh, hopefully know, that the grant administrator, uh, recently came on board at the new position. So, there was some time to, to get, let the grant administrator get caught up on, on what's happening before we, uh, go into that audit.
So, that's why, and, and specifically, when you talk about your engagement resources, that you're talking about emergency services, airports, civic center, local management, but you haven't included the finance department or the great, or the grants administrator in that list of four?
Yeah, and, and that scope is actually going to be-
That'll be next year.
-potentially changing. Yeah, so, so once the grant administrator, we're, we're working out, I think, a January, I'm not quite sure if it's gonna be late December or early January, but we're, we're going to be meeting, and then, uh, we might, uh, shift it to just be emergency services this time, so that we, um, can have like a, a clean process for going forward. And, and then maybe every year, doing a different department area, rather than doing a lot of grant areas, um, all at once. But, but, wh- when we get to starting into the audit in January, we'll, we'll figure out if we're gonna narrow it down to just emergency services, or, or do all, we'll look at all of them.
Yeah, I think it would be nice to know that when you do those investigations, what part of their responsibilities may be shifting towards the grants administrator, so we get a better idea of how that's occurring. I'm assuming something might-
We, we, we don't, we, we don't know yet. And so, that's why, um, having her have that time to get on-boarded, so that when we do meet, we know what is the grant administrator and what isn't. I, I think I'll be ceasing or working with finance as well during this process.
Yeah, I think that the grants administrator could probably use benefit from that report. If you've met with these people, and they say, "This is too much of a workload here. This is what I think the administrator should take." It might help the grant, besides just the council and government as a whole, it might help the, um, uh, the actual administrator better define her, her, her responsibilities and her projects. Right? Makes sense?
Um, yeah, I mean, I, I was okay with starting the audit then, but they requested that we push it until-
I'm not saying you-
Oh, okay.
I'm not saying you audit the administrator. I'm saying, in auditing those other four areas-
Yeah.
-suggesting it could give us a better idea of how much of, in, within those specific departments, they might want to relinquish some of their responsibilities in-
Oh, to finance?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yes, yes. Yeah, I, I, and so, that's why I'm, I'm, that's why I haven't come to you, saying that there's gonna be a scope reduction yet, because we don't really know yet. I'm, I'm hoping that we can look at all of them. Um, so, yeah. Yeah, that's my, that's my hope, still. Yeah.
Any questions? No, all right. All right, Ms. Chantel, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
This time, we open the floor for public comments. If you have any comments you'd like to make, come to the podium, please. Take your name, your county of residence, and your concerns.
Good morning, or I guess it's slightly after noon at this point. Uh, Victor Laws, I'm a resident of Wacomico County. I'm, I'm here representing the, um, Wacomico County Liquor Control Board. Uh, and I really have a question, more than a comment, and the question is, uh, whether you'll permit me to be heard. You have on your afternoon agenda, proposed legislation for the 2025 General Assembly. I think those are alcohol bills, or at least in part, will be alcohol bills, that would affect the dispensary. I would like to just be heard briefly. I think Mr. DeVal feels the same, representing the license commissioners. If you're willing to hear from us this afternoon, I'd like to come back at that time and just speak to a couple of the bills that I think you're gonna hear something about, from Mr. Lufman.
Yeah, I appreciate you, yes. I think that's acceptable. That's, that's, it's quite acceptable.
Thank you.
Should I go to the podium?
Yeah. Um, certainly, yeah. I wouldn't say to state the case on the bills just yet, if you have that opportunity to do that later.
I have the same request as Mr. Laws. Um, not as to any policy aspects of the bill, but there is a technical issue, uh, with two companion bills that we'd like to speak to.
All right, Mr. DeVal.
Trying to avoid problems, I guess, is the way.
Okay, yeah. Thank you, gentlemen.
All right, thank you.
Don, can you give them approximate time, or whatever, so they'll know what time to be back? We gotta take a lunch break. Yeah, um, let's say maybe around 1:00, gentlemen. 1:00, okay. I have a, would one of you, Vic, would you, would you wanna give Mrs. Hurley your phone, she can text you, when we get closer to the time? And you can share that with Mr. DeVal, unless you want both their numbers, Mrs. Hurley?
Time's up.
[laughing] Go ahead, Ms. Hurley.
Don't even hit the button. Don't even hit the button. Jim Atkins, Wacomico County. Uh, I wanna talk about a few things today. Uh, first one is something that you just addressed- Uh, first one is something that you just addressed, which was the county holidays. I'll give you guys credit, you certainly can confuse a normal person. Earlier in the year, you, uh, denied two additional holidays, and now you've just granted a holiday and a half, which is good. My only concern is, we, we keep talking about and hearing about the finances of the county, and I continue to feel like when we talk about the finances of the county and we talk about wages, we talk about eight-hour-a-day, five-day-a-week people. This county has a lot of people who work seven days, not seven days a week, but they work weekends, they work holidays. You've now given emergency services, the correction department, and all the other departments that work holidays, five and a half, plus the holiday for another day and a half. There's financial responsibilities to this, and I don't feel like you absorb them all the time. Maybe you do, if you do, I apologize to you, but I don't think you do. Another thing I want to talk about, which the, the attorney just talked about, are the, are the liquor bills that are going to come up, or the requests for them. We don't need any more liquor stores in this county. We've got six. Five of the six are within a three-mile radius, all five of them. The sixth one is only open five months a year. If you continue to add dispensaries, liquor sellers, you again are financially hurting the county. There's only X number of bottles of liquor sold in this county per year. If you put more liquor stores out there, the dispensary is going to be hurt. You're going to lose more revenue from the dispensary, because they've already lost it with cannabis, and if you add more liquor stores, you're going to have the same amount of problem. As, uh, Mr. White said earlier, we all know how delegate Anderton feels like cracking the door open and busting through it, and this is what they talked about last July, opening the door and busting through it. We don't need any more liquor stores, we need to deal with what we've got, and maybe move one of the ones that we have to the east side of the county. So, there are five of the six are not centered right in the center of the county, in Wycomico County. Maybe the, uh, the east side needs one. Ms. Hurley says I'm out, so I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe White from Wycomico County. I, I do appreciate the, uh, the robust nature of your, of your talk earlier for the letter of support. I'm disappointed that it's going to go, uh, from the county council. I do appreciate that it's not going to go unanimously, so thank you to the coun, to council folks, um, who, who didn't support it. What I want to talk about is the process. On an individual basis, all seven of you, Ms. Chaney Shields not being here, have a tremendous amount of respect for you. If I had an ask, I would not come to you with my own imposed deadline on you and your business. I attend a lot of these meetings, and truth be told, I started attending these meetings a couple of years ago as a, as a community volunteer, because I was worried about the fire service and youth sports, recreational youth sports, not for-profit youth sports. But I've watched several groups come to this table, or even this podium, with their self-imposed deadline on you, and I don't think it's leading to us making the best decisions. Things like adding an extra $2 million or $2.7 million to the Civic Center is important, but it should be planned out. There should have been a time to send that back to, 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 to extra, to additional requests, to take some stuff out. My point is, we're about to enter budget season, and I plan to be here. Budget season is going to be tough, uh, and we're about to find out in the next 90 out of 108 days how tough it's going to be. I don't think many of us are very excited about our state being in a, a $2.75 billion hole, that's actually just the start of it, okay? This county and our taxpayers are going to, to be impacted. Our students are going to be impacted, possibly with Fruitland Primary, but most certainly, if Fruitland Primary is going to have to be funded the way it is, Wycomico Middle School, I attended there, is going to be pushed back further and going to cost us more. I will tell you one area I don't think is, is acceptable, and I feel like there's some folks in this county who are starting to pry this way. I don't believe the revenue cap is, is available to be taken away from us. I intend to do everything I can to defend it, including using our platform on open agenda. And I'm going to use this as an example. Last May 7th, you had a work session with the delegation of, of our area, or, you know, Mary Beth Carosa, Carly Anderton, and Joe Holloway brought up, is there going to be more liquor bills? Carly Anderton says, do you want more liquor bills? And you said no. At the time, it, when Council President Cannon was in Hawaii, Jeff Merritt, the vice president, had to, had to save that resolution. Now, there's three more. Where is it going to be that the, that the plan for the county actually takes care of the taxpayers and is an encompassing plan? That's all, thanks.
White?
Good afternoon, Joe Albaro. I'm a multiple property owner in the county. I'm going to make this as quick as I can, because it's a lot to go over. I purchased a property on Mount Herman Road and Powellville Road some 20 years ago. Was pretty bad off. I immediately rebuilt the whole place and made it very nice to the eye and a really nice home that it turned into. For 20-plus years now, I've been fighting with the county with dilapidated properties in downtown Powellville, 20-plus years. I've been promised, 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 as well as the rest of the community, that something's going to be done. I finally, again, I had my father living in the home until he passed. After he passed, I said, that's it. They put demolition orders out on five properties. Two came down, the other three are still standing. The, uh, engineers from the county came to those property owners and told them what they needed to do if they wanted to fix the property up. But they still had demolition orders. They were not followed through. Nothing has been done on those properties. That needs to be taken care of, and I need your help with whomever can help me to get this done for the community. Secondly, a lot of people know I bought the Route 346 Emporium from Joe Holloway. Since I bought the property, there are three lots adjacent to that store. Uh, a gentleman from Pennsylvania came in, bought one of the three lots, the furthest west from the store. He cut down all the trees, came in with 70-some-odd dump truck loads of dirt to level the whole property off, and has since brought in RV trailers that people are permanently living in, year-round residents. It's not the code, the guy doesn't have a business license to be doing such a thing, and the guy actually thinks the other two lots closest to my store were part of what he purchased at auction. It's not, so he's moved another trailer onto that property next to my store, uh, and then some 15, 20 cars for the automotive shop across the street. Everybody driving by is throwing a fit about it. This week, I went and purchased those two properties next to my store. By Friday or Monday, I will personally do what I can with my attorneys to evict these people off prop, my new property next to the store. But again, the county needs to step up and do something from the executive's office. I've been through three county executives in Powellville, three of them. Nothing's being done, and everybody's claiming that their hands are tied. Where can we get some help? That's what I need from you guys, and if you have any questions, give me a call, and I'll send you more letters out, because the person who owned the properties next door that I just bought, he's from New York originally, when he purchased it, turned it over to his daughter, and, and they both now live in Florida, so they're not even getting the, the letters from the county telling them what to do. So, if you can help me, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Albaro.
Good afternoon, Robert Taylor County resident. That's a hard act to follow, but I'll try. You know, you know about those people from New York, Joe?
All of them?
Yeah. Just a couple of general comments on the thing about the anonymous reporting. There was a mention about the state's attorney's office, the sheriff, and the circuit court being departments of the county. They're not, uh, and I think you might want to look into how their personnel systems operate. Uh, I think a couple of years ago, we had a, what, Police Accountability Act, and I had, that had to do, I think, with complaints against the police and sheriffs, too. So, there may be some conflict there, so I think that needs to be looked into. I can't tell you what the resolution would be, I'm just saying, I think there might be some, some issues there. On the liquor dispensary bills, I agree with what's been said earlier. You've done enough harm already to the liquor dispensary system last year. It's time to call it quits. Uh, we know why these bills are being brought up. It's to help friends of a you-know-who. Uh, this needs to be stopped. The city will be coming before you to, this afternoon, I probably won't be here, with funding for the, um, city fire department. There's an excellent report in your book, I don't know if you've seen it, uh, but we're going to have to start paying more money for the city's fire services, there's no question about it. Uh, and that kind of goes into my next position, or statement that I want to make, and that is, our budget is going to be really bad this year. And if you think it's going to be bad this year, it ain't going to change, because that $2.7 million state deficit that was just mentioned, in four, in four more years, that's could be about $6 billion. If I said million, correct myself, it's a billion. And that's probably why we have the shortfall for the Fruitland School, because this year, there was a $1.2 million deficit. And let's face it, the governor didn't, and the General Assembly didn't want to raise taxes, God knows what they're going to do this year, because they've blown through all the fee raises and things that they could do to come up with a balanced budget this year, and guess what? Latest state data is that it's $3 million, $3 million, $300 million, pardon me, short this year under what they budgeted, because of revenue shortfalls. Now, I don't know how they're going to make that up. Maybe they can cut enough spending so it won't be a problem. But we're going to have this problem going forward, and I would suggest that we postpone any final action on the CIP, which we haven't even seen yet, beyond the normal February deadline, that that can be adopted at, at the same time as the general fund budget. And it just makes sense to do this this year, because we don't know what we're going to get out of the state, but it's probably going to be a lot less than this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Any other public comments? Seeing none, council comments. Shane?
So, I'll start with the shortest first. Uh, Mr. Atkins got up and talked about the holidays and time off, and Laura, correct me, there's only two holidays in the county where employees, if they work, get paid time and a half plus a holiday rate?
I think it's, um, any of the holidays that council has approved. If you work that holiday, then you would actually, you know, get the time and a half.
Yeah, I thought it was Christmas and Thanksgiving, you could get time and a half plus, get a holiday. Other than that, you would just get the benefit of using your holiday on another day. So, I, I think...
So, you get the time and a half if you work any of those holidays, is what I'm saying? It's my understanding, yeah.
That's not the way I remember it, but you, you probably know more than I do. Um, so, the, uh, next thing I've got, I had a constituent reach out to me about the PFASs' and the Purdue situation, and apparently, they are installing, um, water conditioners or water, uh, systems in homes, um, to help get rid of the PFASs. Is that how you pronounce it, Josh? PFAS?
Yeah.
So, um, his concern was, once these are installed, is there going to be anyone going around and checking to make sure they're working? If so, apparently, we only have one, um, plumbing inspector. How's the county going to do with that? So, I did contact, uh, Ms. Hurley. We sent an email, um, to...
Mr. Corey, Adam Corey?
Adam Corey, and we're just awaiting a response on that. Second thing I've got, I met with Mr. Albaro, what day was it? Sunday, Monday, Saturday? Or whatever. Yeah, and the past few days, we met out there a, at his store, and what I saw was, I mean, it was appalling. I, I go by there all the time, I can't believe I hadn't noticed it until you pointed it out. It's a huge eyesore, uh, probably six or seven RVs, 15 cars, um...
No electric?
No electric, don't, don't know how they're, uh, dealing with no water, no sewer. There's been some rumor that they're maybe possibly discarding things in the woods. So, what I'd like to see, Mr. President, if we could maybe have a work session coming up with the health department and planning and zoning to address these issues, to help Mr. Albaro out. But we, we definitely need to do something about that. That's all I've got.
Okay. Josh?
Okay, I just want to jump in on that. I, I think to Mr. Baker's, uh, point, the, you know, the, the RV situation, that's, it's all over. I mean, you can see it in the city of Salisbury, not that far from, you know, a couple of blocks from my house, I see, very prominent one, that someone's definitely living in. Uh, but go down Athol Road, I mean, go through, I mean, pretty much any part of the county, that's a serious issue. And of course, that, a lot of that comes back to, um, you know, to housing shortage, which I think is another thing that we need to think through. But, um, yeah, that really is a big issue, and I think I would second that. The other thing, I just want to say, honestly, the, the budget situation is going to be challenging. I went, you know, we went, uh, to the Maryland State of County's conference this past, uh, week, and, and winter conference, and just tried to listen through some of what the budget, um, expectations there are. I mean, it, it is basically, we're, you know, we are, uh, we're going to be in a rough spot, uh, just from the state perspective, but obviously, the federal government perspective is a whole other situation. You know, the state, the federal government may run out of money on Friday. That, that's a whole other thing on top of it, so...
They can promote more.
Yeah, they can promote, right, of course. Apparently, with no, without abandon. Anyway, but, uh, I think those, I think those issues, I think, really are big. I don't know how we think through the, the things like the funding for Fruitland or other projects, or ranking our capital projects, but, uh, we are definitely in head, um, in store for some really rough waves pretty, very soon. So, I'd love to address that in some sort of better way, and I think we're going to need to lean into with our state partners to be thoughtful about that. Um, and the last thing I want to say is, of course, just Merry Christmas and Happy New Year for everyone.
To Mr. Taylor's comments at the podium, um, at one time, for a couple of years, we did the CIP with the budget, and I think last year, we got away from it, or the year before, but that's, um, that's a good idea, due to the fact that, um, we are going to have some, um, challenges, or a lot of challenges, um, with the budget, and there's going to be some people not watching. We've got these three bills, and yes, I was, um, did ask that question, uh, Mr. Anderton, and, um, you know, um, basically, we knew this was coming. It's, um, it's bills against the liquor dispensary, and we'll be talking about that in open session in a few minutes. Other than that, Merry Christmas, have a new year, and make sure it's a safe one for everyone, and thanks for viewing us on PAC 14 or being in the audience. Thank you, take care.
I just want to, I rode by your property yesterday, and I'll echo Councilman Baker's sentiments, it's, it's definitely an eyesore. So, hopefully, something can be done about that. Appreciate the energetic discussion today on any number of things that we had to, had to get through, and I just want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas. It's, uh, next week. Yeah.
Yeah, I just would like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas as well, and, uh, and Happy New Year.
I just want to go back to the comment that Mr. Shane Baker over there commented on as far as paying for the holidays. We just happen to have, you know, this chapter in our briefing material today regarding the official holidays, so I'll read that section. It's, um, Christmas, New Years, and Thanksgiving, so it is three holidays. And it says, "Employees that work at least four hours on Christmas, New Years, or Thanksgiving will be paid time and a half, plus allow the option to take the holiday, or a portion worked at a later date, or if funds are available, to be paid double time and a half for hours worked and forfeit the holiday." So, it is those three holidays.
The presidential comments, and the presidential comments, I would like to say, first, Merry Christmas to everybody, and Happy New Year, because we won't be back until January. But in reference to what Mr. Albero said, I mean, this is a real issue, and it's a huge concern. It's epidemic proportions, in my opinion, just as Councilman Hastings stated. He's seen them on Athel Road. I've seen them all over, Nanticook Road. And if you go up towards the Sharp Town area, the Haverden Sharp Town area, it's, it's up there. I mean, there are, there are just, as far as the eye can see, you have them all along the power lines there. And this was years ago that I've addressed this, but I think Shane's right. I think we're going to have to have a work session. Because I was, and I've made a couple of calls about this, and I was told, well, that's, that's how it is, the grandfather did, et cetera. I don't know how it is. So I think that, this was a while back. So the fact that it's continuing to grow, and it's continuing to be a problem, I think we're going to have to certainly, appears to me, we're going to have to have more stringent guidelines in order for our departments to follow through on these type of measures. Because it's a hazard, it's a health hazard, it's a fire hazard. And we shouldn't, I don't think we should put up with. And if it's grandfathered, then maybe there's some way, I think through legislation, we could probably create a five-year or 10-year guideline where they have to cease and desist among, you know, I'm not quite sure, Mr. Benson, that may be something you're going to need to look into. But just to say, I think that is important, and we'll get that on the agenda as soon as we can. So, that being said, entertain a motion to adjourn so we can go into legislative session.
Moved.
Set, I mean, into open work sessions. Got a motion, second?
I'm sorry, you have to actually read the adjournment, Steve.
Oh, I'm sorry. All right. Hang on. Entertained a motion to adjourn from legislative, legislative session to go into open work sessions, followed by a closed work session pursuant to the General Provisions Article Section 3-305B1 to discuss a performance evaluation of an individual over whom this public body has jurisdiction to protect sensitive and confidential information. That's motion, Joe?
Second.
Second, motion, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Meeting's adjourned. Where were you convening? This is Wycomica County Council. This is December 17th. The first item on the open work session is the funding for the city of Salisbury Fire Department. We have several here, I think, Mr. Frampton, the mayor.
Good afternoon, council. Thank you for your time, first off. So the mayor and I come before you this morning, or this afternoon, asking for what we're calling some catch-up payments with regards to the way that the Salisbury Fire Department, the city's traditionally been funded, dating back to some invoices that I had back to FY17. The city has always been funded in arrears or in the past. And with escalating costs and budget restrictions and everything, the city is in a position where, where really can't afford to do that anymore. So we're coming before you to try to get this fixed, to try to get the city treated like every other fire department in Wycomica County, and funded basically in advance. But in order to get there, we've got to be caught up. So what we have is, basically, I look at it, is if you're a business owner, and 32% of your business, which is roughly what our call volume is in the county, you had to wait a year or more to get in how appropriate that the sirens are going.
We planned that out.
We planned that out. I just texted before I came up here. But if 32% of your business, if you were relying upon that funding, but it took a year to get, it kind of put your business in a pinch. And that's kind of where the city currently is. So it's not a very successful business model, and we're just acting, asking right now to be treated and funded at relatively the same level as the other fire departments in Wycomica County. So as you saw in the request for the meeting, the cities were asking for an additional $400,000 for calls that were already handled in 2023. And that same level of funding, $2 million, applied to calls for 2024. If you look at the way that each county fire department's currently funded, and you multiply that by three, one for each station that Salisbury has, the $2 million number's still a little bit lower. And I could go on about the various levels of service, as well as the additional services that the fire department provides to the county. So be happy to take any questions, any discussion that you guys might have.
Okay. Any questions for anybody? I think we have, there's actually two issues then, to take one at a time. The first one is the, when you requested the $2 million through last year's budget for this fiscal year, we made it 1.6, and there's been some discussions as far as trying to reconsider that and to allow for the 400.
Correct.
Correct. And then the second part of that is the $2 million of how that's going to be done. Now, in your letter, you're saying invoiced by March 1st of 2025.
Put that on there in anticipation and hope that the legislation would move forward after the first of the year, but that number's, you know, completely dynamic at this point.
Right. And that payment is something that, I understand what you're saying there. We don't know yet what the 2024 numbers are. And you're saying, though, that once we figure out the 2024 numbers, instead of putting this in the, in the, in our operating budget for fiscal year 2026, you're going to be asking for a transfer from reserves in '25, in fiscal year '25s?
Yeah. So I, we don't have the complete 2024 calls, but I pulled them about a week ago. And the numbers that the $2 million was based on for 2023, our calls were about 27% in the county. That number's increased to 32%. Obviously, two weeks short, or three weeks short at the end of the year, but there's not going to be much of a change in that. So the city, in talking to the mayor, was fine with the same level. If we could get the $2 million for 2023, and the same $2 million level, even though our call volume has increased, that the city would be okay with that, with, in good faith, moving forward, that we would be able to get a longer-term fire service agreement before the FY26 budget was struck.
Yeah.
Comments, sir?
I just want to thank you guys for the multiple questions I've sent your way over the past several months. I appreciate the information.
Sure thing.
So do you see the 27% now 32%? Is that a trajectory that you think we're going to stay on, or do you see it leveling off?
If you look at the, I have the, let's see, where is it? If you go back to 2016, it's, it's kind of been an up and down. So in 2016, total calls for service in, not in the city, were 4,568 during the COVID. That went down, which our call volume did, did slow growth during that time, went down to just under 4,000. But in 2023, we were back up to 4,406. So it's kind of, we went, we were high, we went down during, during the couple of COVID years, and now we're coming back out of it. I would say 5% year over year is probably going to be the norm expected. Now, that doesn't mean that they're all, all 5% of that call volume for the fire department's going to be in the county, you know, outside of municipal limits. But that's where we're at right now.
So are you saying that in the future, presently and in the future, that you would be satisfied or happy with, or whatever word I want to use, as long as we base our funding, basically what we're doing for the rural fire departments?
I think that's probably a discussion we need to take a little bit further. We haven't gotten to that point with the fire service agreement yet, because we wanted to see if we could get caught up first. But I think that's definitely food for discussion.
Yeah. I think our goal at this level was just trying to be cooperative, transparent. And we appreciate the conversations we've all had, Joe and John and Jeff. And I think we're going to continue to be that way. You know, our costs are fluid, just like yours are, you know? And so as we, you know, it's just, you know, perhaps have more call volume away, or our costs go up for whatever reason, from whatever source, not intentionally, but obviously, but, you know, just a part of the world we live in, we'll be as transparent as we can, and try to partner as best we can to do, cover your area of the county.
Yeah. And I would just piggyback on to that and to answer your question a little bit more. The, there are some additional services that the Salisbury Fire Department does provide countywide. Sharp Town and Salisbury are the only two dive units. We are the only hazmat response unit for the county. We provide our heavy rescue vehicle to Parsonsburg, Fruitland, and now in fire districts. Our mobile integrated health has MOUs with every county fire department to reach out for repeat 911 callers for EMS. So those are things that the city's currently funding internally now that extend, you know, beyond the municipal limits, out into the county. So I don't want to sit here and, you know, speak without, you know, talking to the mayor and stuff about moving forward, about what an agreement would look like. But I think that number would be similar, along with some built-in, you know, adjustments for some of the additional services and the special operations, as was done in the past, under previous fire service agreements, to the tune of about an extra $125,000 a year. And that, that went away under some of the most recent agreements.
Yeah, I think the current agreement doesn't really cover our hard costs from our perspective, but we, like you, are trying to train, help you train your budget, and hopefully, we're the beneficiaries as we try and adjust what we believe to be our true costs relative to, you know, our service to the county. So.
Yeah.
This is a management question that I get from citizens, and nothing really, I guess. Well, I guess it does have to do with the funding. Why is it when you say in it Salisbury ambulance on a call, there's always a fire truck behind it? Because you don't see that with our rural fire departments.
So Salisbury Fire Department subscribes to the emergency medical dispatching procedures that the 911 center uses, and we follow the National Fire Protection Association's recommended responses. So those calls, those certain dispatch calls, whether it be a Charlie or Delta or Echo, or the nature of the call as a dispatch, is what we follow. The other county fire departments are not following that dispatch procedure.
So is it necessary to do that?
Well, if you want to follow the, the National Fire Protection Association guideline, I would recommend.
You go to some...
The problem you're running to in the county is the manpower and the call increase that way it would create for them.
But isn't there a lot of ambulance calls that are minor when they get there? You know, it's somebody, they don't need a fire truck, you know? I mean, talking about a million-dollar piece of equipment with...
Sure, but you can't go by what, you can't just assume that on every call. If not, we would send one engine or a chief's buggy to an automatic alarm that, you know, fire alarm that could be going off could end up being a fire.
What I hear from people, it seems like a big waste of money. So, anyway.
Yeah. I share that same evaluation as a private citizen, and I say that as the mayor. But I think, I think that we've talked about that and what protocol looks like. So.
Is there a consensus on the 400?
Can you?
Is there a consensus on the 400?
I guess so, yeah.
Okay. So we have a consensus on the 400. In order to execute that, we, of course, would have to, Ms. Hurley, if you want to...
Yeah. So if council is in agreement with the $400,000, I would suggest that we send a letter to the county executive to support that request.
Now, we'll come back, most likely as, well, we'll come back specifically as a transfer from reserves in order to, to make that commitment.
It would come back as a resolution.
Sure.
Yep.
So the, the $2 million, you know, we're in agreement on the $2 million. With the $2 million in March, that's also something that's going to have to come from the executive's office.
Okay.
There, I think a lot of things come into play right there. First of all, we do need to see, I think, what the December numbers are going to show. When do you think you'll get those? I mean, you just...
January 1st.
January 1st, okay, yeah.
Within the first week.
Yeah.
Within the first week, we have those numbers.
That would be a big help, too. And I think what we're going to have to do is, is going to have to give the executive's office time to absorb what the state of Maryland wants to do right now as well. And I know that that may not have anything to do with what you feel your just compensation is, but, and I understand that. But this is something I think, I don't think we want to get ahead of ourselves on the $2 million, leave this in, in the executive's realm. Because as is right now, we've received the cap improvement program, but we have no idea really what's in it. I do know that over the last couple of months, the state of Maryland has said that they are not even going to fund the Fruitland primary school as originally intended, that we're going to have to forward fund it. They'll pay for it. But all of a sudden, we've now been asked, not only have we just bonded $10 million and committed $10 million from reserves, but now they're saying that we have to take, we have to hold, carry the water for their portion to forward fund them. So to whatever degree that might be, whether it's 12, 12 million, 20 million, or whether we have to parse that out over the next, next year, not quite sure. So that is something that was extremely unexpected. And I know from where we just came back from, from Maryland Association of Counties, and you've heard it just as much as we have, the state of Maryland, and it was said twice up here today, I think it was about $37.5 billion deficit. And they're going to be, they're going to be coming down to the county level to find out where they can make that up, I believe. Because the governor said he wasn't going to be raising taxes. And he also said there's going to be a lot of, a lot of angst on the part of the counties, and they were going to have to see what they would do on their end. So we, we don't really know how that's going to play out right now. But we have some time to try to figure that out. But I think we're on the right path here, anyway, regardless. And we will get it through on the 400. Is any, any comments from the council as far as the $2 million under the March? Yeah. It's, it's kind of uncharted territory, but we will get, you know, move forward with the 400, and we'll get that done. And we'll certainly try to make sure that we have work sessions immediately within the new year, when you get your totals, if you give those to us, to, you know, with the assurances of what your calls are.
Sure.
And we'd be glad to work with you on that as well. Any other questions or comments on that?
I'm good.
Yeah, no, thank you.
We're good? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is proposed legislation for 2025 general assembly session. Mr. Lufman, Director of Administration is here, the county executive is here. Good afternoon, everybody. Good.
Good afternoon.
Donkey Lufman, Director of Administration. I think we're going to start with the Salisbury one that was requested, so that Mr. Kitzro can get in and out.
Actually, I left one thing in the other room, but he goes over.
You have to introduce yourself and the bill.
Hi, Andy Kitzro. I'm the city administrator of the city of Salisbury.
Temporary.
Hold on a second. Sorry, Andy.
In your briefbook, it's identified as temporary to go.
Oh, okay, all right.
Page number? Thank you.
Okay. There we are. All right.
So what you have before you is a proposal for to-go alcohol event permit. Essentially, this bill would be two pieces to it. First, there would be a temporary event permit given to Class B licenses holders who are in the, specifically, I'm going to talk about it as a Salisbury, but the way the legislation is written, it's for any municipality within Wycomica County. So essentially, an event that would happen in Salisbury, there would be an opportunity for establishments who are Class B licenses within the event footprint or directly adjacent, should be able to receive a permit to be able to have to-go alcohol. In addition to that event permit, there would also be a, what is called a Class C per diem municipal to-go liquor license. That license would be held by the city, municipalities. So similar to a one-day alcohol license that we would have for an event, we would have this permit, since we would be the event holder and the person who has the, the event footprint. So we would work with the Board of Licensing Commissioners to go through and establish the rules and regulations and how these permits and licenses are received. And that kind of details exactly what the procedure would look like in the legislation. So again, not just for Salisbury, but for all the county, and it would be from municipalities.
Okay.
I'm hoping to answer questions.
Anybody have questions on this?
Yeah, I do. Thank you. So like for the Folk Festival, if you had the event for the Folk Festival, and there was one of the restaurants downtown, they could have a to-go cup of alcohol and be able to walk around the event?
Yes.
Right? That's just like, so downtown Salisbury and...
Absolutely. So, yeah, that's a great example. So right now, with the Folk Festival, the way to set up is we get a temporary one-day license, we provide the alcohol beer trailer, and do it within the footprint. So instead of the city collecting that revenue, we would be allowing the downtown businesses to be the ones who are providing the alcohol during the event. So we would remove ourselves, we'd maintain the footprint, but then, whether it's Amogans, Rodeo Joe's, somebody else in the footprint, we could take, bring that alcohol into it to keep them more involved in the footprint and share that, that revenue with them. So we thought that was a win-win for the downtown businesses, and also take one less thing off of our plate in administering alcohol.
Okay. How would that, I think, using the Folk Festival as an example, again, I think currently, there's some nonprofits that serve during the Folk Festival, and they get some sort of revenue stream from that. So how would this impact that?
It would essentially eliminate that revenue stream. It would essentially eliminate that revenue stream. We would not be hiring the volunteers to support those beer stations, pouring stations. All of the alcohol controls would be done at the establishments. So we'd be removing that from our process.
Okay, any other questions? Everybody okay with this? We're good? Okay.
Makes sense.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andy.
All right. Good afternoon, everyone. The legislation for each bill that's going to be presented by Bunkie and I is legislation that has come from constituents, it's come from a task force. So we have just kind of taken what was asked of us and put it into bill form, so I want to thank Delegate Adams for doing so. I do want to preface by stating we know that alcohol bills can be a little touchy. What I wanted to accomplish with our beer, with our restaurants was accomplished last year. I'm hoping that we can continue moving forward with making some good gains, but if the council collectively does not have a flavor for it, we don't want to turn this into any sort of, you know, back and forth or whatever else, it's just, it either is or isn't. So what we're going to actually do is start with the Sunday hunting bill. So we're going to start with the Sunday hunting bill just to get that off. So two, two years ago, I think, James, you brought it forward, we were able to do Sunday hunting and the way that the delegation went forward with it was a 10:30 time out of the woods. There are several counties now that don't have any time restriction and we would like to be added to that list rather than the 10:30, so.
Okay with that? Yes, Josh?
What is our, what are we currently doing for equestrians or for any of the folks who use horses? I guess the general challenge is that usually you provide trails, they, you know, the reason why we have Sunday hunting laws obviously is that if someone's riding horse back and they get spooked, that's how we end up with someone paralyzed. So what protections are we putting around that to make sure that that doesn't happen?
I don't know what protections we would put out there, I mean, they could.
The, the current?
No, I understand the 10:30, I don't know, we're just, we're more of a, like rural county, so we're trying to follow what the rural counties are doing, and if you look at the list, I feel like we sort of fall under the same as, what is it, Garrett?
Allegheny.
Yeah.
We're 106,000 population, so I don't want to say it's a rural county anymore, but I think that if you look at our neighboring counties, they've tried to, like, for example, you know, where the Gwak, Agonquin run is done in Worcester County, they have specific areas set aside and they try not to, you know, they try to use those for equestrian activities. We have equestrian trails, including in Mardella and other areas. I guess that's the challenge has always been, when I worked with the council only 12 years ago, that was always the thing, like, okay, well, what, what ways are we preventing, you know, yes, you have folks who want to be able to go hunting at different times, but where are we setting aside the times for those who are birders who, you know, when a, when a gun goes off, the birds fly away, you know, not, as we all know. So I guess where are we setting aside the times for protections for those folks?
I think that if they were here to, to talk, you know, if they were against the bill, I mean, I would assume that they would stand up and say something, I don't know. Do you have anything with this, with you being in DNR as to how that went?
No, there are certain state properties that, that have those, but like she said, there's nothing in the, if, the question is if there's anything in this bill that contemplates equestrians, there is not.
Well, I guess if that, if it ain't broke, don't fix it, you know, like.
Well, I think according to the hunters, it is. So I think that they would like to be, you know, they just wanted not have the time restriction like the others. I'm not a hunter, so again, this was brought to me, you know, by, you know, the hunters of Wacomiko County, so.
Yeah, and so we added in last year, we added in so that they can do, they are able to be out there on Sundays, but where are we setting aside the time where we can say, hey, if you go out at this time, I can guarantee, you know, you're not going to, or not guarantee, but you have a much better chance of not being spooked off your horse and being paralyzed for the rest of your life or having a good experience with, you know, with birding or those kind of things. So where are we putting the dividing line? And I think the, the question, or the answer is basically, we're not, we're just listening to the hunters and saying, yeah, anytime, every time, does it sounds good? And if anyone shows up, they don't say.
Well, and across the state.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. So in this case, I think we need to be a little more thoughtful about that, and that's why we have Sunday hunting also, that's why I would be against it.
Any comments?
You know, I used to ride on Sundays horses, you know, I haven't in a long time, and I'm sensitive to what Josh is saying. There are people that do trail rides on Sundays and most of them do trail rides on Sundays because there wasn't hunting. Is this just a private property issue or is it going to be anywhere, any property, state or state properties? Because there's a large state property east of Parsonsburg where people ride on Sundays. So this opens that up to deer hunting on Sunday afternoons also, correct?
Mm-hmm. Go ahead.
Well, the, I mean, if it's a state-owned, I assume you mean like the demonstration forest off of 50-foot road, then DNR would, DNR could say this is closed for deer hunting the same way in Dorchester, the federal government does that for, for areas up there as well as the state.
Well, I think, I think we need to think about that, and I'll tell you why, because especially, I don't know about the west side now, but on the east side of the county, there's a large contingent of people that, you know, I see them with their horse trailers and trail rides. They do it in that state forest some, and, you know, they do it around Willards and Pittsville.
I would like to say rifle season is only a couple weeks out of the year and they've only, they've got Sunday hunting already and you can hunt every Sunday anyway. This is only.
Up until 10:30.
Well, only the new Sundays that were added, and that was just a handful of Sundays. Now, we haven't had any problems with anyone complaining about horse riding, and I do understand what Josh is saying, but we do have summer and spring and early fall that people can ride horses. And the difference is, is hunters pay a lot of money to hunt. Horses, horse people, they do, they pay a lot of money as well, too, and a lot of them has horse farms. But with Sunday hunting, like, there's a lot of people that, and they buy their licenses and they spend a lot of time and energy and money in this, and if they can't hunt in the afternoon on Sunday, maybe it's blowing and it's raining like crazy on Sunday morning, they can't, they can't, or they want to go to church. But the, if this, you know, doesn't pass, it's not the end of the world, we still have pretty much almost all the Sundays except for, I don't know how many Sundays. Bunkie, do you know how many Sundays that are just till 10:30?
No, I don't, I could.
It's really not a whole lot.
It was something that when Senator Pinsky was the chair of the committee this went through, that he started putting as a restriction before, before his tenure as chair. I, I don't think there was any restriction like this.
I think what we could do, Josh, honestly, if we wanted to go forward with it, is one thing that we could do is maybe at the county level, really stress when hunters won't be out there, like, these are the Sundays that are, you know what I mean, where it's not hunting season, we could do a better job. Not everybody, I mean, look, I'm going to be very honest, I don't hunt, my husband doesn't hunt, I, you know, we are just not that type of family, so I wouldn't even know what, what season it is or whatever else, so, but maybe we could do a better job at, at that as, as making sure to let people know, hey, there's obviously no hunting going on during, you know, from this time to this time, so.
Right. James brings up a good point. This is only a few week period that you get to hunt. You can ride horses all year long.
Right.
So, I mean, I, I don't see it, I know somebody that works Monday through Friday, by the time you get home, it starts, you don't get to go Monday through Friday, your one shot to go is on Saturday if the weather's permitting, and it's nice to have that extra day.
And a lot of people still go through the woods regardless if they're hunting or not. They wear orange.
The other stakeholder group in this, I think, would be farmers, and from my time at DNR, generally, speaking generally, not that I can, am a farmer, but they, they are for more access to deer hunting specifically because of crop damage.
If there's no consensus to move forward with this on private and public, I mean, is there a consensus to do this on private? Because I feel like if you own your own private land, you should absolutely be able to do whatever you, you, you should be able to hunt on your land anytime.
Well, before we give anything away, let's see if we got a consensus.
Let's, let's do that.
We did that earlier.
Sorry, Tom.
It's okay. So I'm, I'm under the impression that we're under, we're in consensus here?
I'm for it.
Jeff?
Yeah, I'm okay with it, yeah.
Okay.
I'm not okay with it, but it's not.
So there's a consensus there.
All right. The next one that we're going to discuss is the performance audit. So this is a bill that was actually recommended to us by the state, so when the changes were made last year to the way that we did our liquor dispensary, it was recommended that Wacomiko County have the performance audit, which actually worked out well. We looked at what the task force asked of us, and most of the recommendations should have been made or could have been made from the dispensary side. So the one thing that we could do was the audit. So we understand that the liquor dispensary uses PKS right now, and PKS does a really good job with the data that they're given. There's a couple of things that I feel should still be included in that, one of them being profits and losses, that's not included, salaries are not included, so there's a lot of just missing information, and I don't think there's anything necessarily nefarious about it, it's just things that aren't in, in that PKS report. So it was recommended by the state, this is, the state coming in, they would start July 1st, 2025, and then every three years, as long as we had the dispensary system, they would do their audit. And so, and it's done all at the state level, they, they come in, they do everything, the county's not really involved with it. However, it does take legislation to do it. There are other entities that use this, one of them, I think, is Baltimore City, it's not for liquor, but they use the performance audits at the state level. And again, so this was again, a recommendation made by the liquor task force that was done with various stakeholders on it, and so we're just kind of following through with that, so.
And the state agency we talked to, just for record, was the Alcohol, Tobacco and Cannabis Commission, and they're the ones who actually pointed to this specific piece of law and told us, essentially, I'm not saying they wrote it word for word, but essentially, this was what they, we would need to do. And if you look at the bill above, you can see where, I think it's Baltimore County or Baltimore City has similar language.
Do you say that the liquor dispensary hasn't given you profit and loss or the employees, have you ever asked for that?
Yes.
Have you ever been supplied, so they refuse to give it to you?
Yes, actually, last year, there were a couple of times, and I don't want to speak for council president, but there were a couple of times where I had asked for some information, director of administration asked for some information, county council president asked for some information, and we were denied that information.
Interesting. Have you talked to the state, which agency would do the audit?
They have, they have their own audit group, so it's the Office of Legislative Audits.
Yeah. Would you, have you talked to them about, I mean, are they willing to do this? Is there a cost involved with doing it?
There's no cost involved, it's actually free, and so how it works is, is that if the county asks for it, it has to be done legislatively, so that's why we were pointed this direction. So yes, they have agreed to do it because as soon as the county says, hey, this is what we want to do, then it moves forward.
I made a comment a few minutes ago, if the, if the liquor dispensary is still there, they would do this, what was, what did that mean?
So it just meant that, you know, like, in 10 years, if we decided, you know, to not have the dispenser, I mean, they would do it as long as we had the dispensary in place, that's all.
You know, PKS does our, our county audit, I don't know that we've ever had a big complaint. I think if you contacted PKS and asked for this information, they would include that in the audit, I don't know.
PKS does a great job, they do a fantastic job with the county, and I think that.
If you wanted that included in the audit, I don't see why they wouldn't include profit and loss and, and employees, you know, with.
Well, as I said, this was recommended to us by the state and so, and with the changes that were made, so we're following.
I thought you just said it was recommended by the committee.
And the state, both. When we made the changes last year.
What state?
The ATF.
The Alcohol.
Yeah, Alcohol, Tobacco, oh, sorry, and Cannabis, yeah.
Yeah, Cannabis Commission.
So we spoke to them, and with the changes being made, they said that a lot of counties, when they have an entity, whether it's a dispensary, of course, we're one of two, but any other thing, they have a perform, I mean, they have a Office of Legislative Audits that does these performance audits. So I think in, like, in this case, information is free, and I don't think that it would hurt anything, and it is an outside agency coming in, PKS does a great job, we, like I said, we use them at the county, but this was something that was recommended, and it was also recommended by the task force, so we're following through with those recommendations.
And can we hear from representative from the liquor dispensary if there's any issue with this?
Question I had, it, it's a bit unprecedented, Mr. Laws, but I did say that you guys, you both could certainly speak to any, to the liquor bills as is. I was under the impression that you were more concerned about the licenses and the audits of the restaurant or the to-go.
I have comments about only two of these bills and I can save them for the end, or I'm happy to share them now. This is one of the ones that I did want to speak to.
All right, I think that'll be fine, go ahead.
Okay. We just didn't, we just, at the, again, Vic Laws, speaking for the Wacomiko County Liquor Control Board, which operates the dispensary, and the, we just don't think that there's any good cause for a special performance audit of the dispensary's operations. I didn't bring an annual audit with me, but I've seen several of them, and I don't think it's accurate to say that there's nothing about profit and loss in there. Of course, like any audit, it has a balance sheet and then it has revenue and it has expenses, and the excess of revenue over expenses is the profit. And you've seen the profit because we give you, we turn that over to the county on a quarterly basis. So I don't think that's quite the case. We just don't think there's any good cause for it. I see the legislation already covers the licensing board for liquor in Baltimore City, but I think there was some kind of irregularity or something that nobody has alleged here that led to that, and we just don't think there's any good cause. I appreciate the admission of PKS. It does a good job, they do our audit, they do your audit, they do many other audits, possibly. So we just don't think there's any, any good cause, and.
Do you think it would be hurtful, though? Do you think it would be hurtful?
I just don't think it's necessary.
But it's free, so why would we not do it?
Well, I don't think it would be free because.
Well, it's free, they said it was free.
I'll say.
Sorry, yeah, they said it was free.
I don't see that in the bill, and you've got a state that has, is looking at a major deficit, and I don't think it turns out to be free. I would assume they would charge the agencies that they audit with the cost of that audit, but I don't know that, but I think the bill is silent about who pays for it.
Taxpayers are going to pay for it in one way or the other.
One way or the other, the county or the state. Thank you, thank you for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Laws. Could we get a verification on costs as to whether or not?
From what we were told by the performance audit when we had the Zoom session, they said it is no cost to the county.
Mm-hmm. So if there's no cost to the county, we'll make that preface? That's okay? Ms. Hurley, how is this going to move forward here? Is it just going to be consensus only? Is there going to be some, a more formal process on regarding the council or not?
No, I mean, typically, you guys would do a consensus vote, and then if everyone agrees, we would go ahead and write the letter of support and send it up.
You're going to write different letters of support?
I would for each one of these bills.
So, others, for us to write a letter, we could, well, I would, I would like to know ahead of time whether it costs, whether it's an expense to the county or not, I think that's important. If it is not a, a cost to the county, are we okay with this?
Yeah. Why don't I write to them and then try to get an email back and verification, and I can send it over to you?
Yep. Should, would we have time to get the process through Annapolis if we were to hold another work session in, first meeting in January?
Yeah, 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 we would.
All right, let's do that, let's do that once we get that specific.
Sure.
Okay.
If I get the information before that, would you like that just to have before going into?
As soon as you have it.
Sure, absolutely.
Great.
Should that be into the legislation, I guess the only question there, you know, if suddenly they change, if their policy is that it's free this year and then next year they change their policy because of the deficit, and then we're on the hook every three years for paying an amount we don't know yet, I guess this, this sets it up, it up so that we have to do this every, once every, at least every three years, I guess, should we put it into state legislation or make sure it's noted in the state legislation that, you know, this is not something that, that we as a local body would pay for? I, I don't know, I'm just throwing that out there, but I guess that, it's one thing to ask, I guess, if their policy is this year, but going forward, do we need to specify that? I don't know, but.
That's a good question, but I think this, this bill would let the state of Maryland know that we are favorable to it, but I'm going to guess maybe that the actual cost for this would have to be somewhere in the fiscal '26 or the fiscal '27 budget, and at that time, if we see that cost as whoever the council might be, they could strike that And at that time, if we see that cost, whoever the council might be, they could strike that as, you know, at that point in time. You think that would be, is that a fair statement, you think, Ms. Hurley? Other words, just because we get the legislation passed, doesn't commit us to doing it until we actually agree to do that individually here. This doesn't say that they're going to.
I would want to speak to the Office of Legislative Audits to verify that.
Yeah, this says shall. Of course, we're back to the shall in May. So maybe we could talk to them about maybe not shall conduct it, but may conduct it, or based on request.
That's the word I was looking for.
Or request or something. Okay.
Yeah, okay. That's, yeah, I think that would be best.
Okay.
All right?
All right.
Wonderful. Thank you.
All right. The next one that we were going to go over is the 5 LR 1195. So the Wacomico County, this is the liquor licenses. So right now, the way that the law is written is that the state has determined that we can have three liquor licenses. And that may work for us. However, we would like the ability for our Liquor Licensing Board, which is what we have them for, to be able to determine the number of licenses to be issued and whom the licenses may be issued to. So as you will see, that subsection has been added. And they could choose two. They could choose one. They could choose 10. They could choose, you know, but it would be up to the board. And if it's, you know, if, if we want to put some stipulations on that, that could come a little bit later on. The first piece of this, though, would be that we have local control to determine the amount, whether it would be, you know, whatever that number would be. We currently have three, and it may stay as three. But, you know, if for some reason we wanted to go to four, or we wanted to go down to two, we would need to go to Annapolis now to change that. So we just wanted to give local control for the Liquor Board, Liquor Licensing Board.
So the results of this, if this was to pass, would be any store in Wacomico County that the Liquor Board approved to have a license, a liquor license, could get a liquor license, correct?
They could. They would have to do the hearing and everything else to go through it.
And the results of that would be the liquor dispensary basically going away.
Not necessarily. I mean, I feel like if their pricing is-
Right, right, yeah, okay.
Free market.
You know, this council sits here, and you do too, and twist your hands about where money's coming from and how we're going to balance the budget. And I'll go over a little bit of list I had last meeting, some of the upcoming things. We got a library that we got out there that we don't know what's going to cost us. Is the state going to back out of that like they did the Fruitland School? The airport, we gave them an open checkbook as far as the new airline coming in. If they don't make a profit, we may have to write them a check. The Board of Ed, Fruitland, you know, they've already, state's already said, you know, we're going to have to borrow the money for that. Today, we approved giving 400 more thousand to the Salisbury Fire Department, plus another 2 million. Next year, the Verizon building that we bought on Mount Herman Road, we don't have a cost on what that's going to cost us. Civic Center, we just went 2.7 million dollars over what we thought it was going to cost for that. We haven't got, on the Ross Building, the council, four members of the council, decided to give the Ross Building the tax break. Have you ever decided what you're going to do on that?
I made a decision, yes. Well, it's not necessarily a decision. We, I think, interpret the law a little bit differently. So there is a letter that is attached to the resolution right now.
So are they going to get their tax break or not?
Due to the county council's vote of four to three, I'm adhering to what the council voted for.
So you're going to give them the tax break?
It's not me giving it to them. It's due to the vote of the county council.
2.5 COLA to the deputies. We don't know, we have no idea. Governments, governor's message that we've heard from the governor in the past week or so, or hearing from the state, spells a pretty bad outlook on what our future may hold as far as state funding. Governor also is supporting building liquor and grocery stores and drugstores.
Just beer and wine.
Pardon me?
Just beer and wine.
Beer and wine. And that's going to, that's going to hurt the economy in Wacomico County. There's only two grocery stores now that carry that. So in the past 10 or 11 years, our dispensary's given us $7,700,000, by the figures I got. How are we going to replace that $7,700,000?
Is it rhetorical, or would you like me to answer?
Well, I mean, you know, basically, we know it's going to go down because of the legislation that was passed last year where the restaurants and the bars can buy from the distributors. We gave that option, which I thought was a pretty good option. And we, historically, they've been giving anywhere from, you know, a million dollars. It was less than that before. It'll probably go down to less than that now because of that. So we'll take a figure of 700,000 or 800,000. How are we going to replace, is there, and I know, I know income tax, we've heard that, that income tax receipts have gone up. But how are we going to replace that $700,000 right off, right out of the, right out of the chute there?
Sure. So I think, you know, just looking at things, I think making smart financial decisions, being economically friendly, promoting economic development, being business friendly. You know, we were able to bring in a new developer here, St. John's Property, and it's, you know, half a million dollars, you know, in tax revenue. So I think if we make really good decisions and, and what we're bringing in and making us a more business-friendly county, I think that those things all kind of, you know, come into play. I have a hard time, I understand what you're saying. I know that we get money from them. I have a hard time relying on the drinkers of Wacomico County to keep us afloat on things. And, and I, and I don't mean that disrespectfully, but as a good county council and as a, and as a good executive, I know that we've spent money. I know that. But everything that we've done is for the betterment of this county. Everything that we have done, the decisions that we have made in the long run are going to be way more beneficial financially for this county. I am going to tell you, I am a little concerned about the projections from the dispensary system. You know, just basic math, I feel like we probably should have gotten a little bit more than what we've gotten. And so those are kind of questions that come into play. But as I said, I, anytime we can have local control here, I think is a good thing. So as I said, I am very proud and happy of the legislation that we passed last year. Happy for our business owners. It makes us more, more, it makes businesses want to come here. You know, one of our things that was a drawback for a lot of restaurants was that liquor legislation that was in place. So as I stated, I'm all about local control. If this is not something that the council wants to do, then we won't do it. It's okay. But like I said, anytime we can have local control on something, I think it's a good thing. And I think that if we make good financial decisions and present ourselves as a good business county, you know, I mean, right now, you talk about the Verizon building. The Verizon building did cost us money, and it's going to cost us money to renovate it. However, we are going to be selling hurdle. We are going to be getting rid of the rent out at ES Atkins. So in the long run, I think we're going to do pretty well with it. And it's going to create a space of health equity across the county where it's one place where people are going, not all over the county. So I think, even though it's cost us a little money, I think that we've made really good decisions for the people in this county.
So what would you say, how would you replace this $800,000 a year? I mean, you don't replace it by income taxes going up. This is a check that we get. I mean, who, who's going to write us that check other than them?
I think, I don't know. I mean, I, like I said, I think in the long run, I think that, again, you're getting it in with, you know, like revenue, like taxes, econo- I mean, I don't know. I, I, there's not going to be someone just writing us a check for $800,000. However, we're not going to lose $800,000 by passing this bill, and, you know, we're not going to do that. I think the dispensary provides a good service here. I really do. I think that they are very reasonable when it comes to cost. And so I think if they keep their costs reasonable, I don't think this is necessarily going to change anything. But as I said, anytime that we can have local control, I think is a good thing. I don't want to have to go to Annapolis, or whoever the next executive is, or whoever the next council is, shouldn't have to go to Annapolis to change something when we have the ability to change it here.
You have to, you have to send the names of the Liquor Board to Annapolis to get them approved. So we, you've got local control somewhat, you know, but anyway.
Gotcha.
Well, the, you know, the, obviously, the dispensaries currently can't, if I remember right, can't sell, was it wine? Lotto tickets, snacks, things like that.
They can sell beer and wine from the change that was made by the county council last year.
Then it might be, you know, anything we can do, obviously, to make sure that they stay strongly bringing in revenue. I think that's great. I guess, you know, if Councilwoman Shields were here, she always would bring up, she would be very much against this. She always talks about how, you know, the, there's a scare that there's going to be a liquor store on every corner, kind of a thing. Do, do we know how many current license holders there are of any type? I mean, I'm assuming the board's not going to suddenly decide, oh, and there, you know, it can be 500, everyone, you know, everyone can sell it, you know. But I guess, do we know a total number of individual licensed, how much that even could be?
So we have, so we have three Class As. Yeah, sure, yeah, yeah. So we have three Class As, several Class Bs. However, I think that there is some confusion. We kept seeing that, we kept hearing, there's so many liquor stores on the west side, and there's so many, there's not. So I think that there's a, there's a difference between what a liquor store is, and then, of course, a beer and wine store. So there's stores that sell beer and wine. They are throughout the county. But liquor stores, besides the dispensaries, we have three. And so we have the one at Hopper's, the one at Boonies, and then we also have the one on Nanticoke Road. So those are the only three right now. In speaking, and I'll, and I'll let you chime in here. We, you guys appoint the people, you know, we confirm and appoint the people on the Liquor Licensing Board for this very reason. So if we're putting that faith in them, I would assume that they too don't want a liquor store on every corner. It's not beneficial for anyone to do that, and I wouldn't want that as the executive. The whole idea here is, again, for us, for this specific bill, is for us to be able to have that local control. I'm sorry, go ahead.
So the executive's correct.
Richard, if you could state for the record.
Richard DeValle, the attorney for the Wacomico County Board of Licensed Commissioners. The executive correctly stated, there are three package stores in the county which are required by law to be contiguous and adjacent to a restaurant, and that the licensee of the package store, i.e. liquor store, has to hold a Class B restaurant license. And the three that she identified and their locations are correct. Boonies is out in Tyson, Maryland. They've recently reduced their license space to a seasonal license rather than a full. So they're shut down during the winter time now. I think with respect to another topic of the discussion as to how the additional or the three licenses, whichever you decide, if you decide at all, would go out. Worcester County License Commission determined after legislation that shut down the dispensary in that county, the number and location of packaged liquor stores in that county. I don't know the number. I haven't read the legislation in detail. Essentially, what they looked at was a, the number that were granted, additional to the dispensary were granted based on factors such as need of the community for that package store, whether it was, how close it was located to another package store. There's a number of factors in our statute that would allow the board to make those determinations. One issue I want to raise, and it impacts the current licensees in a way that I don't fully have a grasp of yet. But generally, a licensee cannot hold a Class A package store license or any Class A license as well as a restaurant license. So restaurant license holders can hold more than one restaurant license, but they can't hold a restaurant license in any other class of license. So this legislation may impact the current license holders in that regard. And I haven't got my head around that to speak lucidly to you about that right now. But I would say, if you move this forward, that issue's going to have to be addressed in the legislation before it's dropped in February. Because we don't want to divest the current holders as a result of this legislation of licensing.
I think they're up in, in April, so they would have to renew. So the legislation would pass, however, it wouldn't go into effect either July 1st or October 1st. So there's just a timing situation.
That difference in the timing also adds to the issue.
Just last comment. I guess I am a bit concerned on the, certainly what Councilman Holloway mentioned. Just, you know, certainly with things like cannabis or others. I know, we've been told it's been 15 to 40% drop in sales from different restaurants or other spaces because of use of cannabis instead of alcohol. I don't know what that's going to do to the amount of money that we have to take in from the, you know, through our couple of stores. But that's obviously really helps our bottom line. And I think we're going into some really, I mean, we don't, we all know we're going in some very, very troubled financial waters. I think at this point in time, it's probably not a good move for that reason alone. But that's just my thoughts.
One of the issues we had when we had the legislation last year was small venues not being able to buy from distributors because of storage space, and they had to buy K slots, like your VFWs, your American Legions. If we put the liquor dispensary in jeopardy, that's going to put those, those folks in the situation that they weren't looking to be in as far as having to buy K slots in large amounts because they have to have warehouse space or large amounts of space. So I want to add that to what I was saying.
Vic, why don't you make your comments? Thanks.
Thanks, Mr. Cannon. Again, Vic Laws for the dispensary. This is one of the other proposals that I wanted to address myself to. The dispensary's quite concerned, and as somebody on the council, I think, brought up. The hybrid system, you know, that, that you adopted or that the legislature adopted at your request last year has not had even a full six months to kind of show how that's going to go. And as Mr. Hastings points out, not only is that an impact on the dispensary and what it can produce for this county, the new expansion of cannabis to recreational as well as medical really has had an impact. We do hear that from the restaurants that we supply on the wholesale side. And I think it's having an effect on the dispensary's retail operations as well. So the hybrid system really hasn't been given a full test yet. And I think it would be, this would be a good year to, to take a year off, frankly. That's what I would recommend to you. The task force, some good things came out of it. And I think the dispenser was able to demonstrate some of the values that it brings, not just fiscally to the, to the county's budget, but service to small operators in ways that the distributors don't provide. We're offering delivery to them now, and we offer small lots to them. The small batch specialty liquor products that are very pricey, except at the dispensary. So availability and price is better at the dispensary, the profits to the county. So we just think that there's no limit in this law to what kind of regulations the Licensing Board could, could come up with. The current law allows the three stores, as has been attested to, and the dispensary itself has three locations. That seems reasonable, and we just think that the current system should be given some more time to see how it goes before you introduce still more changes to the way alcohol is delivered in the county.
I do have a question. So with that said, you're saying in the future, you could see a scenario where the Liquor Control Board agrees that there should be more licenses?
I suppose it's possible, but I, I think that number should be set by Annapolis because that's the process. Liquor is regulated at the state level. It's, it's just a fact. Ms. Giordano talks about local control, but there's really never been local control. It's, it's kind of a hybrid system, local recommendations and control out of Annapolis.
James.
So we're collecting tax revenue from cannabis, right? I mean, that's what we've been doing for the past year or so. So I think we're making, are we making more money with cannabis?
Well, the, the issue with cannabis money, or the, I guess, the special case of cannabis money is that really is regulated on where it can be spent. That doesn't sort of go into our general fund or anything like that.
But we can use it somewhere in our county.
Well, I mean, it's, it's heavily regulated where it can be used and what individuals can benefit from it, impacted groups from previous marijuana arrests and that, that sort of thing. That's why, you know, we use the LMB to sort of-
There's two pots of money. So, pardon the pun. There's two buckets of money. One is, I think some things have been brought forward to you guys already, and you have approved those, which was great. And then there's another part that goes directly to the county, into the general fund. Half of that, though, also goes to Salisbury because that's where the stores are. So if they're within a municipality. So we do get some revenue. It's not a lot. I think, I think in that one, it's about $30,000, so about 15 of that would go to Salisbury. As far as the other revenue, I think it was almost over a million dollars. So that's the one that's more of the heavy regulated. So what we're able to do is community initiatives. So yes, the county can use it. So I know Wreckin' Parks is coming forward as, as one of the groups that, that's looking to, I actually talked to Councilwoman Shields about this, different playgrounds and things like that that could really use a facelift or some other thing- really use a facelift or some other things. So, putting that money directly back into those communities, I think is, you know, is a benefit for that. So, there's really good things that come out of it. But yes, so even though there are some regulations on it, we are benefiting very much as a county from it.
State's keeping that money.
Yeah, and I'd like also, I know Dorchester County got rid of their dispensaries 27 years ago, and I talked to a couple commissioners, and they've never looked back. And I think, I don't think they have a limit on liquor stores, and there's a handful in that county. I think probably maybe, maybe close to the same amount of liquor stores in our county. So, I think, I think the market should really drive the locations, and I think if there's a liquor store in every county, there's going to be liquor stores going out of business, because not everyone, I don't drink liquor. I don't think everyone, like, I just don't think that it's going to be thriving enough to have 100 liquor stores in Wycomico County. It's not even going to be thriving to have liquor stores, 10 maybe, in this county. But I just don't think that the government should be the ones deciding the fate on who is the one in charge of the liquor.
That's who would be doing it, James.
Well, I don't think that dispensaries should be in charge of all of this. I just don't think, I think it's an antiquated system.
James, I 1,000% agree. However, none of this legislation that we're putting forward is any way, shape, or form with the intention of closing any of our dispensaries at this point in time. Again, we're just, you know, we've opened the door a little bit, and I do think that there is some room to where, again, local control, I think, is always a better option. You know, going to Annapolis, you know, is very tedious. I mean, there's a long process. I mean, just think about for the last two years, us bringing legislation forward. So, the more decisions that can be made here at the local level with the people that either I have appointed and you have confirmed, or have been put forward for these positions, are able to do that. And I think that it's important for us to put the faith and trust in those people that we have in those positions. And I think, I'm not just saying this because she's over here, but I mean, our liquor licensing group does a fantastic job. I mean, they're a great group of individuals.
The draft bill that we have in front of us, I'm somewhat confused by what is here. It doesn't really state where we're, what we're trying to accomplish, from what I can tell, unless I'm misreading it. It still has a restaurant provision in it. It still mentions that you will be buying from distributors, that these, that there will be purchases made from the distributors. It doesn't talk about the number of licenses that we're seeking. I'm not quite sure what we're looking at here as far as making a valid decision on what we'll be going to Annapolis.
Sure. So, if you look at page two, where the parentheses are, that whole section would be taken out. So, that's why the parentheses are there. So, that restaurant piece of it, operating restaurant, that piece would be taken out, because actually, the next bill that we're talking about actually removes the restaurant.
Right, understood.
Yeah, section. So, that part would be taken out, which is why the parentheses are there. And then, the bold section would be added to it. So, subject to these subsections, the board shall determine the number of licenses. So, we didn't want to put a specific number. It was just that we are giving the board local control to either keep it at three, they might want to go down to two, they may say we need four, but rather than having to go to Annapolis every time, the number of licenses and whom they would be issued to would be done by the local jurisdiction.
How would you tell one person they could have a license and another one they couldn't? If they both own, say, there was a store on the east side and a store on the west side, and who decides that there's going to be four in the county or 10 in the county? And one person comes in and says, "I want to sell liquor. I want a liquor store." And another person comes in on the other side of the county, and we say, "Well, we're limited at six stores." Why is that, wouldn't that be discriminatory toward somebody else?
I think that's how all the other licenses, but I don't know if either one of you want to speak on that, as to how you determine.
I've held licenses in Wycomico County. You can sell beer on one side of the street and the other side of the street, so there's no limits. You know, there can be six stores on six corners at one place and sell beer.
Well, we already have three that are private sector, and I wasn't involved when that happened, but I assume some board, probably theirs, chose those restaurant slash package stores.
And there's a hearing that goes with that, correct? Like, a public hearing or whatever? Yeah, so.
There was a process that's been done before for those three.
Are we planning to do this based on issuance of licenses? Are we planning to do it based on a percentage of the population? Are we planning to do it geographically? Where's this supposed to go?
So, this is just step one. So, this would be just giving them the local control, and then after that, if we wanted to then, if there was provisions that potentially the council wanted, or if we wanted to have work sessions after that, the first step, though, is giving them the ability to be able to say, you know, we are going to determine how many licenses go in Wycomico County.
Mr. Cannon, we have a, this is a pretty, pretty sensitive, pretty, pretty big, pretty big decision here, and we're missing two council people. I'd like to see us postpone this conversation until we have a full council sitting here. I think there's a, I think there's justification in doing that.
I mean, I'm somewhat conflicted here.
And we get our questions together and relay them to them, so they'll have.
Yeah, because I pretty much concur with what you're proposing. I really don't think there should be restrictions. I think there should be, you know, there should be more licenses that should go out. I'm not worried about the funding on the dispensary. With all due respect to both of our attorneys here, I'm just not concerned about that. Maybe, you know, some people, Mr. Atkins, might think we should be more worried about revenue streams coming into the county. But I've always been a firm believer that it's a capital enterprise, free market capital enterprise system, and the government should not be in the liquor business, period. I think it's antiquated, and that's my personal. But I also feel that this is an issue where, where I think it's going to require more public input as well. I really do.
Totally fine, absolutely.
Yeah. I'm just concerned about what our deadlines might be now, and I think we're going to have to find out exactly clearly what the actual deadline is going to be in 2025, of where we can take our time to vet this properly and then come to a decision.
I don't know why the drop date is January, like, I don't know why it's January 17th in my mind, but.
The only topic I am aware of in the General Assembly that has specific dates, one in the House and one in the Senate, is liquor. And I don't know, Councilman Hastings, if you know of any, but there's literally a liquor day in the House, there's a liquor day in the Senate.
That's just for the hearings, though. I'm talking about like, the drop date. So, we'll get that information as to figure out what the exact date is, and I can have that probably by the end of the week, and that way we can figure it out.
Are you suggesting, Buck, that the drop date is probably going to be in January?
Well, we have to have it dropped and, and, you know, through the process and right across the desk in order to make it for Liquor Day, you know? So.
We'll get that date, so that way, but we definitely have at least the beginning of January, that meeting. Absolutely, we have that. So, I can, we can look at that.
Mr. Wendell, you concur that the drop dates are the 3rd of February?
I can double check.
Mr. Hastings?
Hastings.
Yeah, it's on their website.
It is in February, the 3rd and 7th.
The House hearing has been President's Day, I think, in recent years. I don't know when the bill date, the bill drop date is, but the hearing in the House has been on that Monday, that Monday holiday in the middle of February.
Well, I think, as Joe suggests, we'll pass on this today.
Sure.
Too early for us to make a consensus there at this table. The restaurant is the final one, right?
Right, yeah. And that's basically just, for the three licenses that we have right now, there was a law put into place that they had to have an adjoining restaurant. We would like the ability eventually, and they can keep their restaurant if they want, so it's not like they have to shut down their restaurant. But we would just remove that restriction, that they don't have to have the restaurant. I don't think, obviously, it's going to affect Boonies' or Hopper's. I don't think their restaurants are going anywhere. I know that there have been some issues out at Nanticoke Road a little bit, you know, with that, but we just wanted to remove the fact, if we were to give more licenses later on down the road, we just don't want to have to have the restaurant part in there, so.
I wouldn't have a problem eliminating the restaurants with the current licenses that we have, even though, because some of them, I think, went to extreme measures to try to.
Right.
Put it in, but.
It is February 3rd and February 7th.
Excuse me?
It is February 3rd and February 7th, just the 3rd for the Senate, February 7th for the House.
I just have to figure out when the drop, like, when it's got to be in the Hopper. For 3rd and 7th, oh, that is, sorry. I thought you were saying this is a red date. Sorry, yeah. So, yeah, so we still have a whole month.
Okay with the, with eliminating the restaurant provision?
What's that entail? I mean, that, that means that they won't have to have a restaurant?
Right.
I've never understood why that.
It would just be a store. It would just be, they would be able to just have a package store, just those three, right now.
I'm not going to die on that hill, but I think something you might want to think about is the impact on small business. I think if you take away some of these things, there's a 75% ownership requirement that's proposed to be abolished in one of these bills. There's the restaurant requirement that would be abolished in one of these bills. And if you take some of those foundational elements away, you may be opening it to where you're going to have an out-of-town superstore take the place of some of the mom-and-pop businesses around the county that currently sell beer, wine, and in some cases, liquor. So, I would just, I would just like you to think poised about it and be cautious about it before you start taking too, too much of a scalpel to this, to this structure of the way liquor is sold in this county.
And we're acting on something here that, we had people come in today at the podium concerned about their neighborhoods, you know, trash in yards, we hear about trash along the road. We're acting on something here that never had anybody that I can remember other than people that own a liquor store or beer store that want a license. Citizens don't, I, people ask me why we're in the liquor business, and I say, "Well, they give us almost $1 million a year," and their eyes light up, "Oh, that's good," you know? So, it seems like we're acting on something here for special interest, more than.
I don't have a problem, I don't have a problem. Like I said, we're going to postpone the license issues. The restaurant, I've never been able to fathom why the restaurant clause has been there. Vic, I don't know if you can help me through, as far as past history is concerned. I, the restaurant was there, I guess, so that's, people, I guess, would drink, but they wouldn't drive drunk if they had food. But this is a package store. They're selling it any way to go, so why is there a restaurant provision in there? I thought it was antiquated.
I'm not sure I can tell you what the history is, but I think it's one more way in which there's control. Those enterprises would be selling a mix of liquor to customers who were there for dinner, and also people who have the right to take it away. So, I'm, but I do know that total beer and wine is not going to want to come into this market and run a restaurant. And so, I think it has the effect of protecting some local small mom-and-pop businesses that you won't be doing if you sweep it away.
I think what happened there is, a number of years ago, some restaurants wanted carry out wine so they could sell a nice bottle of wine when somebody had a dinner. Well, when you get into nice bottles of wine, you get into a higher alcohol content. And so, that higher alcohol content also includes liquor. So, to be able to sell those higher-end wines with a higher alcohol content, the bill had to be passed where liquor could be sold also. I think that was what happened, and that's probably been 35, 40 years ago. So, I don't know if that's correct or not, but.
I'm told Norm Conway wrote it. That's certainly possible that it was 30 or 40 years.
We'll do, we'll pass on the restaurant, we'll pass on the license, but I would really like, and I guess maybe there are other resources out there, but if you gentlemen can come up with any type of scenarios that you feel possible as to why these provisions are necessary, especially with the restaurant, because that's the easier lift. And then, of course, we know the license is going to be a little more protracted, if that's possible.
Yeah.
Just because I don't know the history.
Yeah. And if you want to generate any list of questions, and have Ms. Hurley send it over to our office, we can, you know, gather anything else you might need for it to make good.
So, we're okay on the audits, we're okay on to-go. We'll get the other two.
You're going to wait till the summer?
Oh, I'm sorry, with the costs. We're looking for the.
Right, right. We'll get that for you.
Thank you, Ms. Hurley.
The only other thing I wanted to add to is, there are a variety of public safety bills and education bills. I know Dr. Stauffer is going to be having an education bill. There are going to be quite a few that I write a letter of support for. There are maybe even some in another topic that we oppose. Anything that I support or oppose, or bills that come across, I'm just asking, would you like me to share with the council for possible support or opposition as well? Okay.
Yep.
Yep, when we get those, we will send those over. All right. Other than that, thank you, gentlemen.
All right, thank you. Thank you all very much. The next item on the agenda is a gentleman who's been sitting here waiting patiently for four hours. The 10-year comprehensive solid waste management plan.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, council. For introduction purposes, on my left, I have Adam Corey, environmental health specialist and acting superintendent at the landfill. And on my right, I have Darryl Kohler from EA Science Engineering and Technology. They serve to advise us on a contractual basis on regulatory issues, reporting and operational issues at the landfill. So, our goal today is to give you a sort of 10,000-foot level education presentation about what's in the 10-year plan. And as I understand how this has been scheduled out, we'll take whatever input you have for that plan, based on our discussion about it today. We'll put it up into a copy that can be posted and advertised in advance of the January 7th date, at which time the public would be free to comment. But we're hoping to hear any comments, suggestions, and such today, after hearing about what's in the plan. With that, I'm going to, as soon as the PC is ready, I'm going to turn the microphone over to Darryl Kohler.
Sure, and I can get started if that's okay while, you know, we get this, get this going. So, the 10-year comprehensive solid waste management plan is a document required by MDE every 10 years, and it's a planning document or guidance document, and it's a malleable, you know, we can modify it over time. So, the prior period was 2014 to 2022, or 2024 now, essentially through the end of the year. So, over the course of this past year, we've been working to update it. Perfect. Now, I just have control here. Okay. So, I'll go with our first slide. Yep, okay. So, it's a COMAR requirement, Code of Maryland Regulations, and covers a 10-year period. There, in COMAR, there's specific requirements. It's five chapters, and what there's, they actually give you a pretty good outline in COMAR. They walk you through everything. It's pretty straightforward. So, the five chapters are, number, chapter one, performance with the county land use plan, two, demographics, three, what is your existing system, chapter four, your assessment of your existing systems and collection facilities, and then five, your actual plan. And they break it down into planning periods. So, status where we are now, we have prepared a draft. We put that in front of the county, Public Works and Solid Waste Division, got their initial review before getting it to, sending it to MDE. And it's a back and forth. Like, there's no full adoption without the county or MDE. But MDE wants a kind of first take at it to make sure you include all the components. So, we did an initial review with the county, and then we sent it to Department of Environment in November. A couple weeks later, they provided us some comments, so we have their comments now. Very manageable comments, really, a majority of it is they want the actual House and Senate bills that have passed over the past 10 years actually just written into the document, and then a couple additional comments in there. So, we're holding these, we had a work session where we actually tried to reach out to the public and walk through what the document is. It's part of the requirement for adoption of this plan is they want to make sure that you're engaging the stakeholders. So, public, you know, departments within the county, certainly the council. So, that was an initial step. That's not a required step. The county wanted an extra step to get in there, connect, connected with the community. Now, we are holding this work session with the council with a very similar intent, is to walk through, walk it through the document, what it entails, what the goals and intent of the document is. And then, I believe, right now, the public hearing is scheduled in the beginning of January. Depending on that outcome of the public hearing, we can adopt it that night, or if there's feedback from the public and we need action items, then we address those, and then we'll bring it back for adoption. Did I just skip past?
You're good.
Chapter one, okay. So, I'll walk through briefly the five chapters. Chapter one is pretty straightforward. That states the goals and objectives of the plan, you know, and then make sure those goals and objectives are in line with COMAR, and, as well as you're going to, it's going to be in line with your, the county's comprehensive. to be in line with your, the county's comprehensive plan. Chapter two, county demographics, essentially they want you to identify the population, do a population growth table, and then further pull out the sections of the comprehensive plan in terms of population, land use and growth and stuff like that. That's what chapter two covers. Chapter three starts diving into the actual data. They want to show, they use a planning year, 2022 is the, the most current fully adopted annual tonnage report and MRA. I know it's, you know, we still have 23 under the belt, but they essentially take the year to make sure it's fully checked and, and compliant. So MDE states our base year of 2022 and we plan that throughout the planning period. So we use the actual data for 2022 and we escalate it. And then, so this includes the table of checked quantities generally annually and you project it over a certain percentage for, for the given year. Chapter four, so once you get past the data, how much you have waste to manage in the facility, in the various facilities. They want the, an assessment of not only the facilities that you have, but as well as the county itself, if you're going to evaluate a new site, new landfill site. So it dives into the valuation capacity of your landfill, of your transfer stations and so forth. But also dives into actual geology and, you know, environmental components of the, of the, so we, you know, in, in broad terms do for the county and areas soils evaluation. It's just published soils data and published environmental wetland data. We do a summarized ad, surface waters and stuff like that. So a big portion of chapter four is diving into soils and environmental components. Also talks about recycling, what we're doing now. And then chapter five is your, your plan of action. And what you plan to do over the next 10 years and then they'll have planning periods from short term, zero to five, midterm, five to 10, and long term, 10 plus. But in addition to those planning periods, it really wants you to own in on, do you have the capacity and resources for your existing facilities to manage your growth? And, you know, the amount of solid waste and recyclables you're going to be handling over that 10-year period. So the next couple of slides are those, the heart of, I think, the chapter five is towards the end of it, the last couple of pages where you identify, like I said, the short, mid and long-term planning goals. Now these, I want to preface that these are planning statements and, and bullets. That's why you'll see evaluate a lot, you know, we're, we're trying not to be too committal, state that we're going to look at this, we're going to, you know, evaluate solar or evaluate, you know, expansion this way or, or with them. So, but some of the initial bullets are more concrete, you know, we're going to be next, within next, within the first zero to five years, absolutely going to be finalized and designed and permitted in the next cell, the final cell for the current landfill. Construct and build cell seven. Complete the phase three component of the horizontal expansion, you know, across Brickell Road. So, and then finalize and implement the horizontal expansion. So those are pretty concrete. We know we need to do those items in the near future. And then you get to more aspirational, at least worth considering, worth evaluating to see what the benefit could, could be for the county. So like I said, solar, recycling impacts, we want what types of facilities, do we want mandatory curbside, you know, all, there's, just, just saying that little topic, there's a whole big.
How many curbs is in Waukesha County? We don't have many curbs. How are you going to do curbside recycling in Waukesha County? I guess that's my question, you know?
Yeah, I mean, we can, we can manage this list that if we know right off the bat.
We shut down our, some of our recycling stations, they pulled them out of, pulled them right out of operation. I don't understand why that happened, but anyway, it did. And I, if I was told correctly, violated the 10-year plan when they did that, when they shut down the recycling stations. It was in the 10-year plan, didn't we have to, wasn't there supposed to be some notification done, John, or something, somebody told?
Add to the fact, yeah, I think we're still looking into that.
Yeah, you know.
I could, I mean, I can speak to that.
Yeah.
So for the 10-year plan, you're required every couple of years to do a progress report and provide updates of any, you know, changes that you want to bring forward. So during that period of, you know, the transition of the recycling facilities, we're in the planning period for the whole, for the next adoption. So we need to update this 10-year plan regardless and have to go through that stage. So it's, I guess, the, the thought of opening up this, this document and planning and providing an update. In terms of a violation to the plan to shut them down, I don't think that's the case. I do think there's merit in that it's.
It is the case.
It's a violation to close it without MDE's approval?
Yes.
I discussed that with MDE.
Yeah, so did I, directly with MDE.
Section 9503 of the Maryland Environmental Code, before a county governing body, which is the Waukesha County Executive and the Council, amends its plan, it has to conduct a public hearing, it has to put notice out, and it has to provide a copy of that to the, to the Maryland Department of Environment. And clearly, none of those things happened.
Thank that. So my conversation with Maryland Department of Environment, my colleagues and counterparts up there that are just came from, the decision to relocate, temporarily shut down or permanently close a recycling station even as long as you're meeting your minimum 20% diversion rate, which we exceed by 50%, that that's an operational decision and component and not needed in the grand scheme of a modification of a plan.
Well, I don't think that's what the law.
And actually have it in writing for Maryland Department of Environment as well.
It would be nice if you, just for the record, I sent a letter to Mr. Wilber October 30th. We haven't gotten a response to it. And that's the question that was asked.
We understand that's an outstanding response and, and we'll make sure that that gets.
Well, it would have been nice if we had it before today. But the other point I would make is that the, under the county, the state law, the, these decisions have to be made by the county governing body. And the county governing body is the county executive and the county council. And the county council was not, did not have any role in the closing of those. And that clearly violates the standard. There's a case, there's a Maryland case that's directly on point that says a governing body, which is the language that she used in the code, is the executive and the county council, not either independently. And when you closed it, you did not bring it to the county council. Did not tell the county council you were going to do it until after it was done. So, I mean, if nothing else comes out of this meeting, I would hope that there would be a general understanding that in the future, that any, any changes that are made have to be made not only by the county executive, but also the county council.
So we are here today to present the 10, the overall 10-year plan. We did give a courtesy notification for a very brief two-week period temporary closure of one of our convenience centers here very recently, where I hope you're aware of, I think most of the council got notification of that. As a courtesy to everybody, based on the, the previous incidents of the two other recycling centers you're referring to. As it pertains to legality or the regulatory oversight of MDE pertaining to the closure as it stands with the 10-year plan, I think that's still up for debate, but we definitely will get back to you on an answer with that through Mr. Wilber's office. But if no further questions on that, we can get, we just have like, I think, two more slides to get through.
Certainly, yeah. So the zero to five years covers a lot more detail in terms of what we want to at least consider evaluating. The final two planning periods, really more broader, broader bullet points. I have, we have here in the six to 10, do we want to advance single stream? And then design and construct in next in series horizontal expansion area cells. Those are, those are given. I mean, in the next, in that five-year period, we're going to be building additional subcells and cells. But then always you want to be aware of innovation technologies that potential. And how far do we want to go down that road in terms of evaluating, but further down a road when we, you know, evaluate our long-term landfill capacity of, you know, 10 years, 15 years, whatever that is. You know, we want to start thinking about where's the next, either landfill site going or is, does the county want a consideration or a more, you know, robust transfer facility? You know, just all those things, at least, we want to at least put them in the plan that we will, you know, vet and evaluate. I think that's the last slide, yeah.
Questions? I was concerned on some issues, because a lot of the 2022 totals, I get all that, that's fine. My concern is how do we truly establish the legitimate projections? It appears as if you're trying to establish your projections based on your 2022 numbers. But since 2022, I think, and I don't know, but we're losing the recycling centers. I'm, I'm really concerned because those are really used a lot. I'm very concerned on how that's going to affect not only your tonnage and recycling with the, with what's required, as well as your project, time projections on your landfill, because that stuff's going to go somewhere.
So you, you are putting the right elements in the equation, you know, limited amount of headspace at the landfill, a permitted height against what can be diverted from landfill in the way of recycling. We did have a look for what it's worth at what the volume of the individual recycled commodities were when those two locations were closed, and it varied very, very little. As far as how we look forward and how we, how we assess what the remaining space is, you know, there's aerial surveys that are done that, from a geo-locate standpoint, identify length, width and height. And we develop density information about how well we compact trash, we know what our permitted height is. And based on the incoming volume and a, and a generally accepted industry standard of about three or four percent increase each year, we, we take a guess along looking with looking at the actual data of tonnage, where we think we're going to be at any given moment in time. And so those, those few components together, the aerial survey, the actual tonnage, and then the details expressed in the permitted height, give us a good sense of the space that we're utilizing. But again, I think Adam mentioned it, you know, we, we're mandated under MRA to reach a 20% diversion rate, and I think we're at just a little bit over 50. So we, I would call that a successful program. That doesn't mean that the items in the short, medium and long range aren't some really good ideas that we fully intend to explore. A big one is food diversion.
What does that 20% number represent?
That represents your minimum diversion of recyclable or reusable materials out of your waste stream. That's what the state requires from us.
Does that take into account other recycling companies like the folks over at the salvage yard?
So we actually have to add into our plan, we name, we name some of the other players in the, in the county that take other materials like, you know, rubble and some other materials as well, so.
Places like that, yeah.
Yeah. There's, I think, what do we have, Darryl, five or six other eight, private companies in the plan that are listed for?
Yeah. And, and for what it's worth, when we get to the point in the year when we're trying to compile this data, there's no legal mandate for any of those companies to be very accurate or for that matter, even responsive. So it's difficult retrieving that information at times. And that being the case, if anything, our, our, our current diversion rate of 50, I think you just said 56, may be understated because we, it's difficult to get, get that information from the private companies. There's nothing that says specifically, you have to report this or this will happen.
And I think another thing that goes into the equation here as well, as it pertains to recycling in general and how many 24-hour recycling centers we have available or where they're located in the county, it's still, the, the other things that we need to concentrate on consistently is that education and outreach to the public about recycling in general. And then two, like Mike just touched on, and it is in our plan as well, which is a big one, which is waste of, food waste diversion. That's real big. Because, you know, 40% of that waste stream on a regular basis all across the United States is food. Getting the large players in the community involved with that is going to be the next real challenge.
Should that be a stipulation in your management plan that we should be focusing on food?
Yeah, so we.
There is something.
We have it in the zero to five.
It's in the zero to five evaluate food waste diversion.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry.
And then we have some big players, and of course, you know, the state has also enacted new law and, and regulation for food waste diversion. Salisbury University is currently participating in a composting program. But getting onboard with the hospital, the schools, you know, and then down to homeowners, which would be the most difficult one, which is a large food industry.
Have you ever made contact with a company in, I think it's Berlin, that makes dog food and they use food waste, I mean.
Bill Jack Pet Co.
Yeah, do they, do they get involved in taking food waste from?
Not sure what their actual influence stream was for what they make theirs with. You know, you're going to make your judgment when you're riding down Route 50 and take a, take a whiff and see what it is.
Same way with Vienna, I mean, you know, people said that that's a lot of food waste. So I mean, is, have we got food waste going into our landfill when there's other options out there somewhere?
And, and that, and, you know, Councilman Holloway, that's a perfect question. And that's, therein lies the issue, how do you separate it out? And again, where you start with is your large food producers.
You're talking about that, that, the, the food waste dispenser, SU, that, the big thing they have in their, their back.
Yeah, behind the commons.
Behind the commons. Man, that thing's nasty. I've seen it and it's, it's pretty amazing that they just throw food in there and it just gets eaten right up.
So we're, we're, like I said, long-term, again, the food part is in our zero to five, okay? But right now, certainly the biggest looming issue that we have is twofold, but it's space and expansion.
You didn't have those problems when you had hog farms.
Right, yeah, that's true. There's some huge hog farms out in Las Vegas, specifically there just to take care of the food waste from, from the Vegas Strip. Yep, yep, you got it. But space, landfill's filling up quickly, we need to expand after we complete cell seven. And then of course, you know, looking into technology in the future and that continuous outreach to the community, including having the conversation about where, where, when and how we do our recycling and recycling center locations in the county as well, certainly.
There's also more recent funding available for food waste diversion, recycling and so forth. Historically, not a, a lot of funding towards solid waste facilities because they're enterprise fund facilities, so. But yeah, from the EPA, it's called the Swiffer Grant Solid Waste Infrastructure and Recycling Grant. It, I think it was, it's due like this week or something like that, but we're, this is the second year it was available. So next year, if that is something that even the county is considering, you know, there's, there's funding for these types of facilities.
I would just say, I'd like to, I would like to see it spelled out as much as possible, you know, in the conservation world that I work on, we always talk about bee hags, the big hairy aldaceous gulls, you know, like what are you trying to go after? What are these strategic initiatives that you were intentionally spelling out as opposed to, you know, like a bulleted list of things that we may or may not go after, but really trying to be intentional about that. I think the, you know, exactly the, the food waste component, you know, we were looked at by some of the major companies in, in the world, looked at the Delmar Peninsula for this specific reason, because we have poultry industry here and Purdue is headquartered here. You know, the, you, we could do food waste in combination with some of the, you know, some of the poultry waste and that could be done through anaerobic digestion, you know, to be able to break that down. That actually is a real opportunity. And I think it would be great for us to, to put that into our long-term planning, but memorialize it a little bit more than, you know, if I were to be crass, I'd say, you know, bullet pointed, but one way or, one way or another, try to, I, it'd be nice to make sure that that, that these big things that we want to try and do are, are put in there to make sure that they're happening. And also I like that you have in there the solar power, energy generation, I mean, that's basically, you know, we have a lot of space that county government owns. We, as much as possible, you know, we should be looking at that, that's, you know, we're just basically harvesting money from the air, you know, from the sky. We need to be looking at that as ways to, to make money for the county or to draw down our costs. So I really like that that's part of it, too. Yeah. Yeah. I'll just, I'll be there. I, I guess the only other thing that's on my mind, when I was first reading this, I was, my first things on my mind was, you know, how much of this is static versus how much of this is kind of, you know, prescriptive or forward looking? I know the state requires a lot of plans from the PPRPs to the comp plans, others, you know, and most of that's just kind of reported out on where we're at. But I hope you all are looking and using this opportunity for this document to be, to be very prescriptive for the future, to make some really big goals. Because I, I, I know we can't do anything about changing the model of, you know, of how plastic and other consumer items are used, but it's certainly impacting us, what the rest of the globe is, is bottling up and selling to, are the people that live here. It ends up in our waste and, and we have to deal with that problem. And so I'd love to look for other ways to, to, to try to address that. And I don't, I don't see anyone going towards burning trash anymore. You know, incineration's not really a thing. So it doesn't really leave us with a whole lot of options other than trying to bury it in the ground and pretend it doesn't exist.
I can.
Thank you, gentlemen, for putting this together, this comprehensive report. I got a couple of things. In a couple of weeks, we're going to see a tipping fee increase. So knowing the controversy that that drew the first time, we had to get past this, what's the, is there a plan, how that's going to be evaluated?
Sure.
More than every five years?
Yes. So we need to get to just around, just over $88 a ton to be breaking even, quote unquote, for what our future projections are for needs. We're still one of the best games in town as far as prices concerned compared to our neighbors. And we do run one of the, you know, most, one of the larger, more effective landfills than, you know, we want to make it the best than the state. One of the things we are doing, and we just implemented it here very recently, in addition to the meeting we held at the Civic Center on November 19th, was the 19th, wasn't it?
19th, I think.
Yeah. Public outreach about this plan. The next thing we did, we hosted just last week, a listening session with the top five waste, commercial waste haulers in our county. We, we brought them into our conference room there at the landfill, along with the city of Salisbury, because obviously they're in that top five, or well, top six. And we had a conversation with them about this plan, about what those fees are, what the projections are going to look like in the future, and that we're all, you know, in this together, really, truly are. We want to continue to have a six month check in with our folks like that, effectively have a six month commercial hauler listening session. I hope to grow it to the point where we are not able to use the conference room. Maybe we use these chambers where we have every stakeholder involved. Because people do need to understand, you know, we don't run a dump. It is a modern sanitary landfill, and modern sanitary landfills are extremely expensive. An oil change on a cat dozer could cost you $44,000. So that's no joke, that's a real one from just last week. So we want to make sure that we're staying solvent and, and providing a good service to our customers and being good stewards of the environment at the same time. And the only way to do that's a plan for it.
Thank you. And ultimately, that cost is going to be passed on to the citizens through their trash collection rates. My second question is, plastic bag ban helped, hurt, or not made a difference?
I would have to say, just anecdotally, visually, you know, living here my whole life and seeing the landfill, coming back and forth, going to my previous employment with the state of Maryland and always keeping an active eye on it, there's a lot less of those fake birds flying around, hanging on to the grass and the fence and everything else. There's no doubt about that. Litter control is, is something we deal with daily. Obviously, high winds and the elevations that we are at, you do have to be very careful and use your bull fencing and strategically place the waste to, but not having plastic bags everywhere definitely makes a difference.
Thank you.
The reason the plastic bags are visual is because they're white.
Of course.
Yeah. I mean, you still have.
And they're there.
Yeah, they don't go away.
Tons, tons of plastic, everything at the grocery store. So banning plastic bags isn't going to solve.
There, when, when a trash truck rolls up though, the easiest thing to blow away from the working face of the landfill and get caught up in the fencing or leave the landfill property is a plast, is a plastic bag. Yeah. Because they fly, they just fly. Plastic bottle from, like the bottles we're drinking here, you know, they don't, they don't move as easy when wind catches them, but those plastic bags, they will fly.
I think we have a tendency to conflate the two though, because plastic bags doesn't necessarily mean we're doing a better job on, on recycling.
Correct.
Litter and the impact to the world.
Yeah.
Bottles are a problem.
Yes.
I think bags are less, but it's the visual of the bags that people are really concerned about, not the fact that we may be saving the planet.
That's exactly the same, the reason I say just the visual, you know, when you ride by. And litter control is a real thing for us, and MDE does look at that as well. And we want to make sure that we're, you know, look, that's a, that's a big thing that everybody can see when they ride down Naylor Mill Road. And we want to make sure we're being good to our neighbors.
Do litter control?
Sir?
You don't do litter control, do you?
On the landfill, yes, we do.
You have trucks that go out and pick up litter off site?
We have inmates on the landfill that walk up the hill after.
About in the county?
No, no, on the hill, like at our property.
Yeah.
We have to, otherwise it'll leave our property.
In the county.
The extent, the extent of that litter control is, you know, when we have the volunteer groups do the work that they do, and there's a, there's a great effort at that, as you know, we, we get phone calls about, you know, where they consolidate and put everything together, we go pick it up.
Is that spelled out in the plan, or should we be more prescriptive on that, or is that?
Yeah, that's a question I had on, because in, on section four, you talked about your anti litter campaign and public involvement. Why Comico Clean has done a really tremendous effort. I know you all were aware of it because you've been helping them, which we appreciate that. Does that warrant referencing in this section four? Is it, or is it something that would be a more generic term that would be for a 10 year projection? Because you never know the lifeline of some, some programs and projects. But I would like to see us implement a stronger support structure for the campaigns and the public involvement.
Yeah. I mean, getting it to its appropriate container and eventually getting it to our facilities, the goal, you know, keeping it out of the environment, no doubt about it.
One dimension, though we haven't mentioned it here, we're still in the finalizing stages of it, is an interaction we've had with the Presidential Scholar Group at Salisbury University. They went through the fall semester at this point of a large group of students, probably around 35 or 40. It's been whittled down to about 10, I think, at this point. And part of their assignment in order to do their civil, civic service requirement is to formulate a survey about roadside litter, and they're in the process of doing that now. And those students will be trained on the science of survey taking, which includes, you know, adjusting for biases, taking information from only adults, so on and so forth. They're going through that training around the first of the year, and by the end of January, they will be employing various venues, starting with door knocking all the way up to setting up booths at public functions, to where they will ask these 10 or so questions about roadside litter and people's ability to dispose of refuse here in the county, what their encounters have been at the landfill. All that should be compiled into some tabulated data. And we're also going to identify, even though we probably have a pretty good idea now, what people's perception is of roadside litter and where the problem areas are.
That's, that's very good. So, and I don't know whether it's relevant to try to maybe incorporate that into more detail in this plan, or, but at, at least in your day to day operations. I think really next year's budget, I think we really need to start seeing some more, a greater focus on these litter campaigns that are out there. Because we have to admit, we were doing it, we were getting along really well when we had the, when we had the inmates who were doing the pickup. And I don't think we solved the problem until they went away. And we've never really solved the problem, yet we have members of the public that are filling that void. And we should acknowledge that, and I think the county should, should have some skin in the game as well. Is there a solution to the, the inmate situation? You know, I know they went home and now they have ankle bracelets, and nobody wants to go out on the street now that they have ankle bracelets. Is there another avenue to that as far as solving that problem?
To get them back on the road versus what we just do at the hill? I'd, I'd have to put more research into that. Mike, you might have some insight.
I mean, I think we could reestablish those discussions now. I mean, you know, COVID's in the rearview mirror, and initially the impact of that is, I think, what caused a large release of those folks to be, you know, contained on their own recognizance with, with the ankle bracelets. But I'm sure by now, we're, we've almost done a 360 back to what those policies are at the correctional locations. So we, we should reestablish those discussions.
That'd be, that'd be really good, because I think that's something we really lost. And the other, the only other thing I would say is, I think we need to focus more on convenience centers. I know that the reason those two facilities went away, there are about three or four excuses for those, those facilities to go away. But one of the arguments was the fact that there was too much trash being dumped there, et cetera. And I had said, look, maybe we should start staffing more, more sections. I think we have, what we have, we have 11 total, we have five staffed?
Well, it's, no, so there's 14 total.
14.
Four of them are 24 hour recycling. The other are convenience centers that are staffed.
A convenience center, yeah.
Right.
So my suggestion would be, maybe we should add more convenience centers.
So the issue, I guess, we could, we could certainly look at that. The issue that becomes from the recycling part is, the ones that are open 24 hours a day, they're not staffed. We're not going to staff them 24 hours a day. Those lend themselves to be abused, where the people pull up and drop off eight mattresses, you know, or whatever else. So we have convenience centers where recycling is outside of the lock gate, like for example, close to my house, you know, in Fruitland, the Allen Convenience Center, that you can, you could pull up there any time of day after the gate is closed for the convenience center and drop off your recycling. The convenience center needs to be manned, because now you have people that are, their permit required, number one, they're coming in as a resident with a sticker, so we need to make sure that that's, no one's just coming and dumping for free, or dumping something they shouldn't be. Having 24 hour convenience centers, I, I don't think that's what you're asking for. You're just specifically looking for the recycling component.
I'm not quite sure how it all plays out.
Okay.
Responsibilities are one, this is another. Why others, I'll just give you one example, maybe that'll help. Civic Center, what would have happened if you, and what, what would have happened if you transferred or made that a convenience center?
So a conven, if you made the, let's just, for all things being equal, if you turned what was at the Civic Center into a convenience center, now you're talking about a loading dock, a packer, you know, two 40 yard dumpster bins, legitimate daily trash, not just your plastics and cardboard and, you know, all that.
Sort of a mini landfill in a sense, right?
No.
And it's fun, because you're taking much more than just recycling material.
Yes, you're taking full trash that's going to go into the landfill as well. That's what convenience centers are, are really for. That's to, for people not to have to travel to our landfill.
Right.
Come up on the hill, go across our, you know, it's all getting scaled, but no one, those are for your residential sticker holders. You know, you, you want to keep mom and pop in the, you know, two wheel drive Toyota Corolla off the hill, you want to let your Republic Waste and your City of Salisbury dumpsters go up there. So that's what the convenience center's for, literally provides that convenience. Having one of those in the middle of the Civic Center parking lot would be.
I was just trying to, so, I mean, so, but what I'm trying to get is some type of hybrid between, we know a convenience center is too extreme, but is there any way to staff recycling centers?
Well, it's certainly something we can have a discussion about. I don't know that, it would be hard to do one 24 hours a day, there's no doubt about that.
For a recycling center?
Yeah.
You do one in Willards 24 hours a day.
Willards is, yes, but it's not manned.
Definitely.
Yeah, yeah, that's not manned. We don't have any employees.
Well, I'll tell you one, you know, we, we've had all these discussions about trash along the road, and they've got these groups out there. I'll tell you when it all started. Now, we've always had problems with littering, don't get me wrong.
Sure.
The complaint was, the reason they removed the recycling station from the Civic Center parking lot was that things were getting dumped there that shouldn't be dumped there.
Right.
Okay. And we know that, okay. So when they removed the recycling station, guess where all those things went along the road? It was easier to get them from there than it was along the road. So that's why you got all this trash along, that, that much more trash along the road. You know, when they were dumping what they shouldn't have been dumping at recycling station, at least it was there, and it was easier to retrieve. So when those recycling stations left, that's when all this crap started, excuse my language, that's when all this trash started ending up along the roads where, where, or more so.
It was the only location in Salisbury.
Yeah.
And, and I just, I guess that part, Salisbury, last I checked, is the biggest, you know, municipality, we have the most populated.
So I don't necessarily disagree that a recycling center available 24 hours, you know, in the heart of town, if you will, is not a bad idea at all. I don't think the Civic Center is an appropriate location for it. If that's supposed to be, you know, where you're attracting your out of towners, and the first thing to do is pull up and on that day, there is seven mattresses, you know, I might want to go to Talbot County.
Does the city not recycle?
No, the city has curbside. The municipal.
But not, but to be clear, I'm in, dead in the middle of the city, and I can look outside my dining room dinner and table, you know, window and see a county properties. So it's just, there's county properties all over in the middle of the city. So those folks are just, you know.
I mean, we're certainly, I'm more than willing to have the conversation, and if the council has suggestions, you know, we'll absolutely work with you to, to make it work for everybody. From an operational standpoint, I will say this, from an operational standpoint, it does have to make sense for us logistically as well.
I'm just throwing it out there.
Yeah.
Would you extend the convenience center hours and back down some of the 24 hour places?
I don't think, although I appreciate the comment, I don't think that's going to solve the problem.
Well, I'm just thinking as far as money issues, you have to pay people to go to these 24 hour locations and clean up the mess all the time and take the dumpsters all the time.
Right.
If you had less of those, you would have more money on the operational side to, me thinking this, you would have a little bit more money on the operational side to add another day or two to the convenience centers, possibly.
Potentially. So our staffing that is going to the 24 hour recycling centers is our roll off drivers. Our roll off drivers are already strapped with covering the entire county. And believe me, we, if, if anybody wants to know what those logistics look like, strap in, because the next couple of weeks with Christmas and our consumer economy, you will see how much trash is generated in this county. We will literally be directing traffic on both Brick Hill directions, back all the way to both intersections, watching that trash come in.
Okay.
So, yeah, exactly. So logistically, being able to free staffing up to do that, I, again, I don't know that allowing a convenience center to be open later is going to police the issue. I think it.
A lot of it's about geographical.
Yes, I think that's the issue, and geographics is the issue here. Again, I don't, I don't see why we can't have a conversation about another place to have it, where it would be more user friendly, benefit the community, divert the waste so it doesn't end up on the road. Well, look, we're not going to stop every bad apple from pulling up in the pickup truck at 2 o'clock in the morning and, and dumping off, you know, whatever. But we can do our best. So more than happy to have that conversation, sure.
Thank you for including the large waste haulers in the tipping fee scheme, because they're the ones that have to fight the battles. Do we know how many open positions are at Public Works now?
Specifically solid waste or all of them?
Solid waste.
We're, we're almost fully staffed.
Okay. I was just wondering, would it be feasible to, because I'm looking at your organizational chart here, I wonder if it would be feasible to take one of those positions and possibly reclassify it as a litter pickup coordinator, working in conjunction with the convenience center supervisor or something like that? I mean, we have 700 miles of roads, it's a lot of litter.
Yeah.
A lot of coordination as somebody who's walked a mile or two out there picking up litter. It, it'd be great to have somebody to coordinate the effort, because there are plenty of volunteer groups that want to get out and, and do the work. It's just, I think one thing we're lacking is the.
Coordination.
The cheerleader.
Right, here's where it is, let's get it together and move.
Right. That be worth a conversation or?
I, I believe we've, I know that we've had discussion, we, we had, we entertained as a visitor, Bruce Enberg, I believe, and we had a discussion with county executive a visitor, Bruce Enberg, I believe. And we had a discussion with county executive participating and Vunki participating on the concept of working with our partnership in the city to perhaps jointly contribute to a position like that. And, you know, we're, we're in the middle of doing that right now, actually. Hopefully, we get all that resolved and can, can come forward with something in budget time. I mean, ideally, that's, that's how it could work.
Be great. That'd be great. Thank you.
Awesome.
Anything else, Mr. Collier? Do you have anything else?
I just kind of wanted maybe just a couple of the, you know, comments that I got. I mean, essentially, I agree with them all. Mr. Hastings, the food waste and solar panel, we can certainly add paragraphs to chapter five. There are, that's the section due, there are in there. So, any, any of those items that we feel strongly about, absolutely. We can add, you know, a few paragraphs.
Or that you can bolster that. That'd be great, I think.
Absolutely. So, I highlighted the, the food waste and the solar panel. And then, the, the stronger support system for the litter campaign, campaigns, we could put that in the plan. Yeah. I mean, it's, why not? If, if it's something that we want to, you know, document and then encourage, so, why not? I, I want to put it in there. So, yeah, Wycomico Clean, expand that on to the, you know, plans for encouragement and outreach, public outreach. And then, oh, the community centers, in terms of locations and stuff like that, how many are, have video surveillance?
I'll have to get you those numbers. I know, obviously, Newland Park does. I know that Allen does.
There's a couple of the, the 24 hours, I thought, have.
We, yes. And we just did put a new camera up at the one that's by the bus, the school bus terminal there for Wycomico County Public Schools across from the, the park.
Yeah.
Delmar, yeah, that sounds right.
So, yeah, let's look at the difference between those facilities that have that surveillance versus the ones that don't. And, you know, in addition to staff, maybe we consider, you know, some more of that option.
Yeah, you would have to. I think that's the, the good call for the 24-hour places.
Yeah. So, for time, that's going to be cheaper than staffing somebody. So.
Part of what I think you need to consider, too, which, the video is a good step, but I think the, where we also seem to be falling short is the enforcement. And that's why it does, gets us nowhere. We have all the video, we need.
Yeah, fair enough.
So, whether or not we come up with a better plan on enforcement, whether there's other counties that are doing it maybe better, that may be something to review to see, maybe we can include that in the mix as well. Stronger enforcement through some measure.
Yeah, we can communicate with, communicate with Westside County.
I just had a thought. I was just thinking, you know, if you had a 24-hour place, could you have a, like, if you had a pass, let's just say, you know, how you go on the Bay Bridge, you go into Bay Bridge, it clicks, you're there. Could we have a containment zone where you drive in, they read your license plate, they know who, who you are, the video surveillance watches you dump the trash, you dump your trash, if you break the law, we know exactly who you are, and then you can drive around and leave. Is there something that we could do that where it's unmanned?
So, it's, it's funny, James, you know, we brought this up here a couple of weeks ago. We were thinking about when we started renewing, reading on our stickers out to all of the public. It's like, you know, what would be really easy one day is to almost have like an EZ Pass. You know what I mean? Eat a trash, a trashy pass. There it is. Right. That's, that's, it's, it's going to, the kids all want it for Christmas.
That's what we got now.
Yeah, that's right. So, yeah, but something like that could work in theory. It really, that's a pretty exciting idea. Honestly, it would just be, you know, a capital improvement, obviously, because then you would, you know.
Well, you would cut back, I would think, on labor costs, because you could open up all your convenience centers for 24 hours.
The convenience centers, I don't think you'd ever be able to sell me on having one of those open 24 without, without a manned station. I'll tell you why. Because that's when you're, you're really going to get into some issues with somebody bringing something they really shouldn't. Yeah. But, but recycling, I hear you. Yeah.
Okay.
So, for a little history, when they first started doing dumpsters in Wycomico County, there used to be little landfills around. Pittsville had one. Well, everybody had a, every little town had a place in the woods where they took trash, right?
Right.
So, then the county got into the business pretty big, a lot larger. And they started putting dumpsters in different locations. And they put, put one up in, north of Parsonsburg, at the corner of Bob Smith Road and Parsonsburg Road. And about every weekend, somebody would go by and set it on fire. So, the fire department would have to respond.
Literal dumpster fire.
Down around Pittsburgh. So, if you had them things where people ain't watching them, people are going to have fun with it. So.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, it's a thought.
Yeah.
I like the idea. Really do.
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, so, next steps, we have the, the public hearing. You know, I'll get these recommendations incorporated. And then, addition to MDE's comments, it will have a document for the public hearing.
Thank you.
All right.
Really great work.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Mr. President, just to back up for a minute on the alcohol, my understanding is that the, their, January 17th is considered the bill request guarantee date for alcohol bills. I would defer to Councilman Hastings as to what bill request guarantee means, but I think that means that's the guaranteed date that the committee will take it up. The bill and hopper date is February 6th. I assume the distinction is, if it's in by the 17th, they take it up. If it's not in by the 17th, they might take it up. So, it's a, I assume the date, the, the real date is January 17th.
Yeah. And it's not just alcohol bills for the 17th. It's all bills for guarantee. Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. President.
And it can be introduced after the 3rd and 7th. They just have to go to Rules Committee.
Turn the worst section going to closed session.
Second.